Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
All right, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners Regular Business Meeting is now called to order. The date is March 18th, 2025. At the time, it's 6:00 PM. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And do we have anybody? No invocations tonight?
It will be a moment of silence.
A moment of silence? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Will you please stand for a moment of silence and then we'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to the adoption of the agenda, I'll just do roll call. Board members, please state if you are present tonight. District 1.
Here.
District 2.
Present.
District 3.
Present.
And District 4.
Present.
And Chairwoman Anderson, I am present. All right, next. Courtney?
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have the adoption of the agenda. Are there any board members who have any amendments during this time?
Yes. Item number 6 and item number 13, I would like those removed to the regular agenda, please.
Clear.
Yes, I'd like to move item 13, Resolution 2025-42. Item...
Wait, you said... Okay, so Commissioner Allen, you said 6 and 13?
Yes. Oh, you did say 13, okay.
Yeah, so she's already said 13, so we've already got that one. What's your other one? I'm sorry, Commissioner Reeves.
Item 16 and 17, Resolution 2025-49 and Resolution 2025-50.
All right, so we have items number 6, 13, 16. Please cut off all cell phones at this time, please. So we have items 6, 13, 16, and 17. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
All right, all right. At this time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion at this time? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstention? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have our proclamations. The first one is Clayton County celebrates First Responder Health and Wellness Week, given by Chairwoman Dr. Alika Anderson Henry. The second one is a proclamation for Clayton County recognizes Women's History Month, given by Chairwoman Dr. Alika Anderson Henry. And number three is the announcement, we will talk, well, we'll come back up from there and then we will listen to our Tax Commissioner, which is Ms. Danielle Smith, about the homestead exemptions. Before we go down, we'll just go on and let the first proclamation start playing and then we will come down for pictures. Thank you.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners honors and celebrates First Responder Wellness Week. Whereas first responders, including law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical services personnel, non-1-1 dispatchers, correctional officers, and members of other organizations in the public safety sector, come together to protect and aid our community in the event of an emergency. And whereas first responders risk their life and safety every day in the performance of their duties to protect our citizens. And whereas first responders are tasked with handling dangerous and complicated situations. And whereas first responders often experience stress that has real physical impacts, including cardiac issues, diabetes, obesity, and sleep issues. And whereas first responders are up to 25.6 times higher risk for developing post-traumatic stress disorder when compared to individuals without such experiences. And whereas First Responder Wellness includes management of issues, including but not limited to, sleep, fitness, nutrition, fatigue, anger management, post-traumatic stress, and loss. And whereas we recognize the integral role first responders play in our communities and the benefits derived from their hard work, commitment, sacrifice, and unhesitating dedication. And whereas research shows that fostering a strong wellness culture inside first responder agencies enhances relations within the communities they serve. Now therefore I, Chairwoman Dr. Alika Anderson Henry, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim, March 24th through 28th, 2025, as First Responder Wellness Week in Clayton County, where the world lands and opportunities take off. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 18th day of March in the year 2025. Clayton County!
Yes, and also let's do a picture with all of our department heads from our emergency departments.
We'll do a group chat.
For those of you who are leaving, thank you for all the attendance. Let's give our first proclamations.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners honors and celebrates Women's History Month: Moving Forward Together. Whereas March is nationally recognized as Women's History Month, a time to honor and celebrate the remarkable contributions of women throughout history, as well as to honor the countless women who have paved the way for future generations in every field and across all walks of life. And whereas women have played a pivotal role in shaping our society, breaking barriers, and inspiring generations through their courage, innovation, leadership, and perseverance. And whereas the Clayton County Library System serves as a valuable resource for education, enrichment, and empowerment, offering programs, events, and materials that highlight the achievements of women from all backgrounds and all walks of life. And whereas the Clayton County Library System provides a platform for fostering awareness, understanding, and dialogue about gender equality, women's rights, and the historical and contemporary challenges women face. And whereas the theme for Women's History Month 2025 is moving forward together, women from diverse backgrounds have made significant impacts in every area, including politics, science, arts, education, and social justice, paving the way for future generations. Clayton County Library System is commended for its commitment to teaching, inspiring and nurturing a community spirit through its programs that highlight and celebrate the accomplishments of women throughout history. And whereas it is through the continued efforts of educators, activists, leaders, and everyday individuals that the history, achievements, and contributions of women are continually recognized, celebrated, and advanced. Now therefore I, Chairwoman Dr. Alika Anderson Henry, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of March as Women's History Month. We encourage our residents to reflect upon, honor, and recognize the invaluable contributions of women in our community, nation, and world.
Is she here yet? All right.
Let this month be an opportunity for all to recognize the strength, resilience, and
If Ms. Smith is not here, then we will move on to public comment.
influence of women, past and present.
Madam Chair, the Board will now hear public comments.
In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 18th day of March in the year 2025.
Well, on behalf of the Clayton County Library System, we want to commend all women.
Citizens will be given three minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the Board with a total time of 30 minutes.
All women who are here, please stand up and let us empower you.
Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing
We thank you for your...
Thank you for all of your achievements.
body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members,
Thank you for all of your achievements.
shouting, and using obscene language.
Thank you for everything that you have done.
Please state your name and county of residency.
So we are empowering all women from the Clayton County Library System.
Speak clearly into the microphones and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
All right, up first will be Bishop Donald Battle.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bless all of you. Thank you for letting me speak a few minutes. I am privileged to be the Bishop of the Divine Faith Ministers International on Terra Boulevard in Jonesburg. I have been so for 35 years, started in my home. I am privileged to know most of you personally, friends, and so I came today because of the citizens. I thought about how we started years ago, how we planned so that the county would change most of the commissioners I knew personally and was friends. There was no African-American leaders in office. It was actually dangerous sometime organizing. The worst I was sued was sued over a building that I rented just so we could have roundtable discussions. And I'm so proud of Clayton County and I think you guys are doing a grand job. This is the greatest county in Georgia. It is the blessing of Georgia. I actually believe that most folk want it back. And so you have been elected. I believe that you are getting ready to do some marvelous things. You're going to make us even prouder than we already are of you. But it hurts sometime when I hear you arguing and attacking one another. It hurts because of the labor and the sacrifices that was made so that you would be in position. I was part of the change of Atlanta with great Mayor Mainer Jackson. Boy, he trained me well. Chief Bell. The other day, I got a call from Andy Young while his daughter was just transitioning. He called me, talked about you. He loves you. Talked about some things he wants to do. And so I'm here tonight to tell you that y'all got to learn how to get together and learn how to love one another better. Get behind closed doors, disagree, come out here and be ready to do business.
Amen.
Make this county now what it's supposed to be. Boldly take us where we've never been before. Give us businesses that others dream of. I fought for this county for 35 years. I've given my life. God has let some of us stay around a little while so we could see it happen. And I'm here. So I didn't come to bash. I didn't come to say nothing. I called a couple of you just to see if I could work it out, then called you, called your husband. And so I'm here tonight and just said, please, please, I beg you, get together, resolve the issues, and let's get ready for some great things for Clayton County. Amen.
Thank you, Bishop Battle. Next would be Keith Parker.
Good evening, Commissioners. Keith Parker, Clayton County. Stone Soup. A group of travelers arrived at a village carrying an empty cooking pot. They went door to door asking for food, but no one was willing to share with them. So they went to the river and filled the pot with water. They dropped a large stone in the pot of water and placed it on fire. One of the villagers walked by and saw the pot with the stone inside. "What are you doing?" she asked. The travelers replied, "We are making stone soup, which tastes wonderful. We would be happy to share it with you, but we are in need of a little garnish to improve the flavor. Do you have any to spare?" "Why, yes." "I think I know just the thing," said the villager. She returned home and gathered some carrots to add to the stone soup. Another villager saw the travelers cooking the stone in the pot, and he asked what they were making. "Stone soup." They replied once more, and again they offered to share some of the villagers, some with the villagers in ingredients. The villager gathered some potatoes and onions to bring the soup. Along the way, a few other villagers saw the man who told them about the soup. They wanted to enjoy the delicious meal too, of course, so they gathered their own ingredients to add to the soup. Village after villager came to add to the soup until the entire village contributed something and gathered around the fire. The travelers thanked the villagers for their contribution and removed the stone from the pot, for it is impossible to eat a stone. Everyone enjoyed delicious bowl of soup, which tasted just a little bit better since they all had a hand in making it. Thank you for having me this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for this. Next is Ms. Ray.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Ray, Clayton County, of course, and District 3. And to be quite candid with you, Chairlady, I collaborated with Mr. Parker in asking him to bring in the stone soup story, because that story was about a village that worked together to make sure everybody had what they needed. When I first spoke to this particular Board, not mentioning Stone Mountain, when I pointed you two out saying, "Y'all let this county get like this." But God knows, Demont is trying to truly redeem himself, and I appreciate that. But I talked to you about 581, and I was concerned because I felt like there wasn't enough information about it. But I saw Ms. Reeves stand up and work to learn so that she knew how to best take care of her people. And I've seen her in other venues, being at the senior centers, working to know, striving to learn. And what people may not know about you, Chairwoman, you want to learn too. But baby, you can't learn by yourself. You got a village. You have a team. And everybody on this team needs to learn. And learning should be open to everybody on the team. When I look at what has happened and I look at videos that doesn't have us in a good light but has us in the light of, "There they go again," that's bothersome. And it's really bothersome to me because what most people don't know is I brought you two together in the back in the booth in the corner in the dark where nobody would know that we were talking, but we're like, these are the things that need to happen. And promises were made. We've got a collaborating sheriff with a collaborating chief of police who, like good villagers, brought the crime rate down 22%. That needs to be supported. That's got to be supported because we can do even better. And I know you want to do this. You opened your heart and told me that you didn't know how to do the budget process, but you were learning. Reeves was willing to learn. You were willing to learn. Tashay is willing to learn. Demont was willing to learn. Can't speak on Gail yet, don't know her that well. But baby, things have got to change. We can't keep looking at the news and it's bad Clayton County stuff. We cannot...
Thank you, Ms. Ray. I appreciate you. Thank you. Next is Ms. Addie Whitaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Ray, Clayton County, of course, and District 3. And to be quite candid with you, Chairlady, I collaborated with Mr. Parker in asking him to bring in the stone soup story, because that story was about a village that worked together to make sure everybody had what they needed. When I first spoke to this particular Board, not mentioning Stone Mountain, when I pointed you two out saying, "Y'all let this county get like this." But God knows, Demont is trying to truly redeem himself, and I appreciate that. But I talked to you about 581, and I was concerned because I felt like there wasn't enough information about it. But I saw Ms. Reeves stand up and work to learn so that she knew how to best take care of her people. And I've seen her in other venues, being at the senior centers, working to know, striving to learn. And what people may not know about you, Chairwoman, you want to learn too. But baby, you can't learn by yourself. You got a village. You have a team. And everybody on this team needs to learn. And learning should be open to everybody on the team. When I look at what has happened and I look at videos that doesn't have us in a good light but has us in the light of, "There they go again," that's bothersome. And it's really bothersome to me because what most people don't know is I brought you two together in the back in the booth in the corner in the dark where nobody would know that we were talking, but we're like, these are the things that need to happen. And promises were made. We've got a collaborating sheriff with a collaborating chief of police who, like good villagers, brought the crime rate down 22%. That needs to be supported. That's got to be supported because we can do even better. And I know you want to do this. You opened your heart and told me that you didn't know how to do the budget process, but you were learning. Reeves was willing to learn. You were willing to learn. Tashay is willing to learn. Demont was willing to learn. Can't speak on Gail yet, don't know her that well. But baby, things have got to change. We can't keep looking at the news and it's bad Clayton County stuff. We cannot...
Thank you, Ms. Ray. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ms. Addie Whitaker.
Good evening, Chairwoman and esteemed Board members. My name is Addie Whitaker, and I'm a resident of District 1 in Clayton County. I am here tonight because I feel that the voice of our community is not being heard by our elected officials. We feel undermined and left in the dark about critical matters that affect us all. For over 30 years, Clayton County has struggled with unresolved water infrastructure issues. Flooding continues to plague our neighborhoods, causing significant disruptions and distress among residents. It is imperative that there is transparency and accountability from our leaders regarding how these issues are being addressed. We need clear communication on plans to improve and build a better Clayton County for all its citizens. In closing, I urge all elected officials of Clayton County to prioritize the needs of the people they serve. It is time to come together, set aside differences, and work collaboratively to create a safer and more prosperous future for Clayton County. Thank you for your attention to this important matters. Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. Next on the agenda is Dr. Henry Anderson.
Henry Anderson, District 3 constituent and resident, unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. Good evening, Chairwoman. Mrs. Dr. Alika Anderson-Henry, Vice Chairwoman, District 1 Commissioner, Ms. Elena Reeves, District 3 Commissioner, Ms. Tashay Allen, District 2 Commissioner, Ms. Gail Hambrik, and District 4 Commissioner, Mr. Demont Davis. And continuing with my Clayton County Board of Commissioners' performance appraisal, assessment, evaluation, standards, benchmarks, metrics, and criteria that I will be using in determining your overall numerical grade rating score, I will now start at your evaluation benchmarks, metrics, and criteria number three, which is how well that all five of you as our Clayton County Board of Commissioners are excelling or not excelling in your decision-making powers and in actions implemented and carried out in making Clayton County a better place to live, work, play, and enjoy right now in real, present time. Evaluation benchmark metrics and criteria number four, which is the ability of all five of you as our Clayton County Board of Commissioners to work together in unity, concert, and in full cooperation, synergy, and collaboration with each other, and whether or not all five of you individually and collectively is our five-member E6, which is elite, excellent, exceptional, exemplary, energetic, and enthusiastic Clayton County Board of Commissioners, are innovative, creative, inventive, pioneering, modern, relevant, progressive, uplifting, engaging, empowering, up-to-date, positive, high-level, and a Clayton County Board of Commissioners that is a great, mighty, powerful asset and a positive force of good and greatness for the citizens of Clayton County, as opposed to being a Clayton County Board of Commissioners that is underachieving, subpar, below average, mediocre, low-level, commonplace, lackadaisical, out of touch, uninspiring, unimaginative, and just an ordinary, unremarkable, you're due for now, Clayton County Board of Commissioners, and at your absolute worst, a Clayton County Board of Commissioners that make, pass, set, and implement into action governmental operational decisions, policies, rules, regulations, guidelines, principles, and ordinances that cause immeasurable, irreparable, extensive, and widespread damage, hurt, and harm to our safety, security, protection, and quality of life, living, and enjoyment in Clayton County, would also make all five of you, our Clayton County Board of Commissioners, a very negative, problematic, destructive, and dangerous commission, and a threat and liability to the way of life that the good and great Clayton County citizens presently have and work hard to keep and enjoy. I will continue with your evaluation benchmarks, metrics, and criteria that will be used in your Clayton County citizens' evaluation process during the public commenting section at the next Clayton County Board of Commissioners' Regular Business Meeting two weeks from now, on Tuesday, April 1st, 2025, at 6:00 PM. To all, continue to have a very positive, productive, great, engaging, orderly, excellent, exceptional, and outstanding rest of your Clayton County Board of Commissioners' Regular Business Meeting on this evening, Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. Good day.
Thank you. Next will be Mr. Timothy Von Dale Jefferson.
Timothy Von Dale Jefferson, unincorporated Clayton County. First of all, I want to thank my bishop for coming and laying words of wisdom for my elder. The elder has come and spoke, and I hope that it resonates in the spirit of you guys.
Thank you. Next will be Mr. Timothy Von Dale Jefferson.
Timothy Von Dale Jefferson, unincorporated Clayton County. First of all, I want to thank my bishop for coming and laying words of wisdom for my elder. The elder has come and spoke, and I hope that it resonates in the spirit of you guys. I want to elaborate on thinking outside the box. And when I say that, I have conversed with the sheriff, I have conversed with Chief Roberts, I have done a little due diligence. And I think the municipalities are getting away with murder. And so is the airport. The municipalities bring their arrestees to the Clayton County Jail. So does the airport. But they're not paying any funding to maintain the jail or plan per person to the arrest. So it's up to the county to absorb that cost. But they pay us for fire services, they pay us for other different things. So I think that to create a revenue source, and I recall the city of Jonesboro in 2018, two and a half mile radius city, they had $1.8 million in traffic tickets. But none of that funding came to the Board of Commissioners to maintain this facility that we own called the Justice Center. So while they want to be isolated and within their own communities, I think that we need to really look at a revenue stream that can assist us in maintaining the maintenance of that jail. If it's just $200,000 a year, collectively, I think that we wouldn't be bogged down and put the burden on the citizens. Because ultimately, the citizens are paying 60 percent. 60 percent goes of the tax revenue goes towards the maintenance of this county. That is not sustainable, or if you look at five years down the road. The governor has $16 billion to $19 billion surplus. And I've been talking to the chief, I've been talking to the state legislators, the state senators, and you guys. Why can't we collectively come together under the premises of law enforcement, safety, to request some funding to assist us with all these matters that we have before this board, so we can relieve the citizens of some of this pressure? I just think it's time for all department heads and leadership to think outside the box, to bring in some other revenue sources.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Next is Ms. Atanya Jean Funny.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Atanya Jean Funny, unincorporated Clayton County, District Three. I stand before you tonight in my capacity as President of the Clayton County Federation of Democratic Women to invite you to our Women's History Month Celebration that will be Tuesday, March 25th at 6:30. The event will be held at 1544 South Lake Parkway, Suite 9D, Marl, Georgia. And Commissioner Davis, you're invited also. And we will be honoring, and I know you all want to come to honor these ladies, we will be honoring three phenomenal Clayton County women. Tracy Gilbert, who is the Director of Community Affairs, Marketing, and Communications at the Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta Airport. We will also be honoring Crystal Perry, founder and CEO of Melanated Pearl. I noticed that Ms. Perry gets honored by people in different counties, but not here, which is where her home is. And we will also be honoring Ms. Vita Brown, founder and CEO of Sisters Empowerment. So I would love for you all to join us. You can follow us on our Facebook page, Clayton County Federation of Democratic Women, and I hope to see you all next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you for that invite, Ms. Funny. Next is Orlando Gooden.
Madam Clerk, Orlando Gooden, District Three. I attended the sheriff's town hall meeting Saturday, but I didn't have to ask permission to be invited. Commissioner Reeves and Davis were also in attendance. The sheriff's presentation was excellent, and when there was a problem with the video, he used the time to answer all the questions, and he backed it up with facts. Had the chair attended the meeting, they wouldn't have issued a statement with the word "indicate." That is not proof. I did an interview with reporter Tom Jones, WSB TV. I said, "It is my opinion, it was petty, vindictive, and petulant." But the chair didn't do the interview. People who have something to hide never have anything to say. If the sheriff can have a town hall meeting and answer all the questions, then this chair should do the same, since they don't answer questions during public comments. Several years ago in March, Deputy Sheriff Brandon Chris bypassed finance and came to the Board of Commissioners for additional funds. After it was approved, Commissioner Anderson said, "I support all law enforcement. If the sheriff needs funds, they should come directly to the board." So what has happened? Commissioner Allen is an elected official and answers to her constituents and has a right to be in budget meetings. She has not committed any ethical violations and should not be accused without facts. Where is the Ethics Board? And why isn't there an Ethics Officer and an Ethics Administrator? We need it because this chair is out of control. It is irresponsible to want to spend money we don't have on a sports facility ahead of the sheriff's need for additional space because his jail is overcrowded. Also, the same type of sports facility complex called Lake Point in Bartow County filed for bankruptcy. Any criticism or performance review from somebody who hasn't been here for three years, and then in three months is going to give you a performance review, and it doesn't start with the chair, dismiss it as garbage.
Thank you, Mr. Gooding. Next is Teresa Tally.
Teresa Tally, District Three, Hampton. First, I would like to thank code enforcement for removing several signage. It looks so good, we're able to see. However, some of the people continue to replace their signs once they are removed. This has to be consistent, or despite your efforts, the outcome or results of your work will be rendered ineffective. I'm not sure if you all have noticed, but since February, DRB Homes, which is located in Henry County and Fayette County, they have posted seven of their subdivisions on McDonald Road and Terra Boulevard. So what they're doing, they place their signs after five o'clock every Friday. By Sunday night, they are removed, but the sticks are still there. Even if code enforcement go today, they would see the sticks is still there. They're doing this once code enforcement is gone for today. And once again, we have new subdivisions in Clayton County. I have never seen any of Clayton County subdivisions posted in Henry County or Fayette County. Please look into this. Friday night, they will be posted. Sunday night, they will be gone. But once again, those sticks, they are still there. A lot of this is in our district, Commissioner Allen. So please look into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally. And code enforcement is here tonight, so if you'd like to speak with someone, they can meet you in the back as well. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Next is Ms. Priscilla Stalworth.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. I'm Priscilla Stalworth from Clayton County. And I've been having a feeling with this Atlanta Gaslight Company and them charges. I'm a C and S, and I live off my husband, my late husband, Social Security. And so I finally got a good rate. I was paying 67 cents.
What district are you in, Ms. Stalworth?
Ma'am?
What district?
I live off Anvil Block.
So you're District One, okay.
Okay. And so I was paying 67 cents of terms with Georgia South, and I got 36 cents with Zoom. My gas bill going down. It didn't, because what they do is they increase your base charge. So I had them to ask them what they was included in these base charges. They was happy to send me the email of what it included. Now, they give, Atlanta Gas gives C and S a discount if you survive, and if you're making $2,000 a month or less. If you're making, I mean, $110 more, you don't get it. And I'm happy for the C and S that does. But they charging me a fee for it. Why I got to pay? Because Atlanta Gas is giving them a discount. They also have this thing they call the FRF. That's when Atlanta Gas is sending gas to government buildings. This building and the other buildings, any buildings in this government here that they send gas to, they charging me a fee for it. I don't understand why I got to pay for gas coming to y'all buildings when I'm fighting, trying to get this through for mines. They have another one they call the ERC, when Atlanta Gaslight leaves another plant to clean up. Like if y'all leave y'all house, I leave my house apartment, we got to clean it up because you came in the place, it was clean. You got to leave it, it was clean. That's how you get your deposit back. And last time Atlanta Gas moved was in 2018 from this plant in Augusta, and they have to clean it. But they still charging me a fee for it. And I believe in paying my share of bills, but why I got to pay for them, is like, they're charging me for stuff that that should be theirs. And when I called out enough to complain about it, the more I called them, the more they went up. My base charge last month was $95 higher than my gas bill from Zoom. And then I'm calling and explaining, this is not fair. It's unconstitutional, seemed like to me. And they basically told me to have a Coke and a smile, pay the bill, they gonna cut it off. And that's just not right. I want somebody to call on my behalf. I don't mind paying my, I thought, well, last time, my base charge was like about $38 way before, since you're using for that. When I first moved my house, it was six o'clock. Now, I've only been me for the past eight years, almost 10 years, and my stuff is still the same. And it's just not right. And I'm asking y'all, if y'all can help me. I don't mind paying my bills, but I should have to pay for what they give for other people. That's all I'm asking.
Okay. I'm going to put you, Ms. Stalworth, DCO, is COO here? DCO, can you get with Ms. Stalworth, and we can get our representative from Georgia Power to, I'm sorry, Atlanta Gas Light to help you?
Yeah, because they ain't listening to me.
Yes, ma'am. All right. You can get with our DCOO, and they will help you. Thank you. Next is Joseph Verden.
I'd like to thank this commission for allowing me to speak. My name is Joseph Verden. I'm a physician.
We actually don't have time for another speaker. He will have to speak at the next meeting.
Okay. Do y'all want to, I have a whole another list back here in the back, so do y'all want to go on and finish these speakers? Which, what would the board like to do? Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Since I came down here, I really wanted to address, one of my missions as a physician throughout my life is to be an asset to the community in which I serve. And I am concerned about the residents of Clayton County having the best possible healthcare services, and also about the inmates, that they would have the best physical service, the best medical service that they could possibly get during their stay there. I met the Chairlady when she was campaigning, and I've been kind of impressed with what has happened since then, as me being a member of Clayton County. Some of the things that have happened, I've been very impressed with. And I'd just like to commend you and thank you for your service. But, you know, there has been a lot of turmoil, and since I'm here and I've heard it, I'd just like to address this. And we have to exist and move forward in order to be a successful county, not only for the citizens, but for everybody involved, and also for the state. So as we move forward, it is imperative that we rally behind leaders who are genuinely invested in the well-being and advancement of our community. Now, Dr. Anderson Henry is that leader for me, and for many others. She has proven time and time again of unwavering commitment to transparency and accountability, which is a cornerstone of effective government. Her visions for Clayton County transcends immediate fixes. It is about forging a robust foundation for a thriving future. By fostering collaboration amongst council members and actively engaging with residents, she is steadfastly working to restore faith in our local government and ignite a renewed sense of hope and opportunity in our community. I call upon my fellow citizens and council members to unite in unwavering support of Dr. Anderson Henry during this critical juncture. The unjust scrutiny she faces is not merely an attack on her leadership, it is an affront to the progress we have fought so hard to achieve as a community. We must stand resolute behind a leader who has confronted adversity with courage and tenacity, continuously advocating for the best interests of all Clayton County residents. Let us not allow the misguided actions of a few to eclipse the dedication and relentless effort of a leader who is committed to making a tangible difference. In conclusion, I urge each of you to recognize the essential needs for stability and strong leadership in our county. Dr. Anderson Henry's proven track record speaks volume, and her contribution deserves our recognition and unwavering support, not unfounded criticism.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you so much.
Well, just to say, together we can amplify voices and build a brighter community for ourselves and all the people in the community.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you. All right. Board members, that's it. Okay. For all of you who did not get a chance to speak tonight, you all will be, we will consider for you speaking at the next board meeting, which will be April 1st, is it?
Yes, ma'am.
Which will be April 1st. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Madam Chair, the board will now consider the consent agenda.
All right. At this time, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. All right. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion at this time, board members? Y'all got any discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next, we will start with Item Six, Recommendation for Ward Fireworks Annual Contract for the Clayton County, Georgia Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Vice Chair, and Board. The recommendation is for Ward of ITB 2501, which is fireworks is the annual contract on behalf of our Parks and Recreation Department. The recommendation from Central Services is to award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting the specifications, which is Southern Sky Fireworks. They're located in Sycamore, Georgia. The amount of the showing is $25,000. Funding is available through the Parks and Recreation Department's General Fund. The department's recommendation memo, the bid tabulation summary, as well as the agreement are attached for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendation. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairwoman or her designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and to also authorize the interim Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right. At this time, I need a motion, and then we'll go into discussion.
So move.
All right. I second it. All right, any discussion at this time?
Yes, question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is Director Horn here?
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners.
Two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
I had a citizen calling me earlier today, and I wanted her questions to be answered. So her first question was, how many shows do we have scheduled? And then her second question was about how many citizens attend this yearly event?
Okay, so this year, we have reduced the number from two shows to one fireworks show. Um, in two thousand and twenty-four, International Park alone generated eighty-three thousand dollars in revenue on the Fourth of July. Um, and we had approximately seven thousand visitors inside of International Park. Thirty-five hundred of those were in Spivey Splash. And we also in, um, extend the hours for Spivey Splash on the Fourth of July, so that participants can stay to enjoy the fireworks.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions at this time, board members? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next is number thirteen.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Madam Vice Chair and Board. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five forty-two is a resolution of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, approving the adoption and performance of a master bond resolution. The master bond resolution by the Clayton County Water Authority, the authority providing for the issuance of indebtedness of the authority pursuant to supplemental resolutions to adopt it from time to time by the authority, which shall secure the payment of such indebtedness solely from revenues of the water and sewage system. The system owned by Clayton County and operated by the authority, authorizing and approving the adoption of certain supplemental resolutions and taking of all other actions necessary to the consumption of the transactions contemplated by this resolution and for other related purposes.
All right. All right, I'm gonna move to the vote at this time. Uh, I'm gonna move to, uh, would anybody like to, uh, move on with this, with the resolution at this time?
So move.
All right. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion, Commissioner Allen?
Yes. Mr. Franks.
Mr. Franks, will you please come up? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so my question, so I have two questions, one for me and then one from a citizen as well. So my question is, are you opposed to doing the bonding in phases? Or is your, uh, prefer to do it all at once?
Well, if you, I think we mentioned it last time, when you do the bonding in phases, um, your interest rate, uh, there's a possibility that there's an adjustment there. But if you're in the middle of a project as well, if you approve us to a certain level, we get in the middle of a project, can't get further bonding and approval of funding, uh, it would halt the project. If that makes sense to you.
Okay. And then the question I have from a citizen who called me earlier today, she would like to know what happens to the rainwater that falls in communities with septic tanks? And then the three dollars and seventy-five cent monthly fee that they pay, where, um, does that money go to the Water Authority for storm water management?
Okay. So your first question is, where does the rainwater go? Uh, rainwater typically, when it comes to septic tanks, if you have a septic tank, in many cases, if it rains a lot, a lot of the rainwater will get into your septic tank as well. But ultimately, that water makes it to our rivers, creeks and lakes. And we utilize that water out of Flint River or Old Mogi for, uh, drinking water. And the second question, where does the funding go?
Uh, the three, yeah, the three dollars and seventy-five cent monthly fee.
That's for repair, replacement of storm water, uh, infrastructure.
All right. Board members, are there any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, um. I just call you C E O, Franks, right?
No, it's fine.
Um, can you, um, I know you did the presentation at our working session last week. But could you, uh, just briefly talk again about, uh, any, uh, rate hikes that Clayton County residents would see on their bills?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, based on the one point four billion dollars worth of debt that we are needing to acquire to, uh, work on a dual plant for our, our Freeman Road Plant, which is a water production plant, to move that capacity large enough to sustain this community now, in addition to the further, uh, growth that's coming along in this community, as well as to deal with P Phos and P Four. I talked specifically about those forever chemicals in my, uh, last meeting. I think most of our, uh, community knows the effects of P Phos, P Four, which is a forever chemical, that we are working diligently from a regulatory standpoint to remove all, uh, elements of P Phos, P Four from our water. So that's really the extent of the cost here, from a capacity standpoint and from a regulatory standpoint for two or three plants. Did I answer it all?
I didn't hear you mention, um, any changes to the...
Oh, the cost?
Yes, thank you.
Well, currently, we have an eight percent interest, I mean, an eight percent increase that we've already included in it, which was still the third lowest, uh, in the region. If we did not incur this debt, I mentioned the probability of about a twenty-six percent entry, uh, rate on your water, which would take us above even the city of Atlanta. Uh, so to, to regulate cost, plus those who will benefit from the uses of these, uh, this infrastructure at the plant, in addition to the capacity that is stretched out throughout, uh, the time period from eight percent. We've got a statute of about eight percent, a couple of those, and a five percent, uh, ultimately throughout the twenty-five, thirty years of this debt.
Okay.
So if we didn't do, incur the debt, we would be immediately having to increase our rate to about twenty-six percent, which is significant.
Thank you. And can you reiterate, uh, what the financial impact of this is for the county?
The financial, for Clayton, for Clayton County itself, there's no financial impact for the, uh, for the commissioners at all. The debt, uh, is all Clayton County Water Authority's and our responsibility to navigate payment of that debt.
Okay. Thank you. Those are the two questions that I have, but I know, um, I had someone from District One, um, ask a question about storm water. Is there any relation to this project that you're doing with the water filtration and capacity? Does that have any effect on storm water, um, storm water management or storm water capacity for Clayton County Water Authority?
Well, if you're speaking of filtration or the cleaning of water, yes. But when it comes to storm water, n- no.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Commissioners.
Board members, are there any other questions at this time? Commissioner Hamperick or Commissioner Davis?
Can you reiterate, as far as the, you said the region, we have the third lowest...
No, the third lowest. I wish I had that slide.
Third lowest water rates in the region, and that region consists of...
Caillou, Henry, Fayette, um, Atlanta, uh, Cherokee, quite a few, it's, it's more than that though.
And as far as our capacity now, what capacity of water usage are we using with our system right now?
On average, the community use is twenty-eight to thirty-two.
Percent?
Uh, thirty, twenty-eight to thirty-two million gallons per day. Uh, average twenty-eight to thirty-two million gallons per day is what we use. We, we reaching for forty-two M G D.
Okay. And commercially?
Uh, that's combined.
Oh, it's combined, okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Also, Mr. Franks, uh, we've been seeing a lot of infrastructure issues with other municipalities. And, um, I just wanted to ask you, how are we as far as our infrastructure? And do we need to look at any federal dollars at this time for that or anything?
Well, we're currently using funding from WIFIA and Jifa. Uh, when it comes to infrastructure, we're amongst the best. We're an award-winning utility every year for water, sewer and storm water. We're doing more improvements now on our wastewater side. This huge improvement that we're, that's coming about now is on the water side for capacity reasons. But we're continuing to replace galvanize, uh, service line, uh, transite service lines, and, uh, and we've also done the lead and copper program. So we're doing excellent, honestly.
Thank you for reiterating that for us. Board members, are there any other, um, questions at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes.
Nay.
Next.
Thank you.
Are you nay or aye?
Yes, it was a nay.
Okay. I'm sorry, but, uh, we have one, um, nay, but the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you.
Chair, important privilege, one moment. I'd, I'd like to recognize, uh, our previous chairman, Jeffrey Turner, who's come down to support us in his retirement times. Thank you.
Also, I'm gonna, again, um, let everybody know District One voted, you, you voted yes, correct? Just wanna make sure. District, um, Three voted no. District, um, Two, but yes. And District Four, yes. And Chairwoman Anderson, yes. Thank you. Wanted to make sure we got, everybody got that straight. All right, now, um, Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash fifty, number seventeen.
Uh, I believe it's sixteen next. Item sixteen, yes, okay.
I'm sorry.
Item sixteen.
I'm sorry, sixteen.
Twenty-five forty-nine, which is the resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a...
I skipped over sixteen, I'm sorry, sixteen.
Into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Forest Park, Georgia, providing for the terms and conditions under which Clayton County will conduct a City of Forest Park special election to authorize the Chairwoman to execute any documents and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget as needed to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
All right. Um, I need a motion at this time.
So move.
All right. I second it. All right. Any discussion at this time, board members?
Is our Elections Director here tonight?
I believe she is actually administering the election today.
Yes, today, is it? So she, she is administering, um, is there anyone, well, no one else can be here. They're busy right now, so is there...
I, I was just curious about the, the timeline for when this typically comes on to the agenda for the Board of Commissioners to approve for an election?
So the process typically is that the, um, the particular municipality will, um, ask the Board of Elections whether, uh, they have the capacity and willingness to conduct the person, the special election. Uh, once that occurs, the municipality will enter into the agreement with the Board of Elections. And then at a later time, then the Board of Elections will then present that agreement to the Board for ratification to make sure that when the money is coming, that it goes to the right source. So, uh, it, it can come at any time between now and, or at the time it was approved in March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Which is today.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions at this time, board members? All right. Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? All right. The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next is seventeen.
All right.
Two thousand and twenty-five dash fifty.
All right. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five fifty is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Clayton County Board of Education, providing for the terms and conditions under which Clayton County will conduct the Clayton County Board of Elec, Education, sorry, special election to authorize the Chairwoman to execute any documents and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget as needed to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
All right. Um, are you ready for the motion? I'm ready for the motion at this time.
So move.
All right. Second it. All right. Is there any discussion?
Is that motion just to approve?
Just to approve.
Okay.
All right. Any discussion at this time, board members?
I mean, same, same question, but now from a policy standpoint. Um, is there, you know, anything within Clayton County's statute around, um, the timeline for approving elections between the Board of, the Board of Elections or the Elections and Registration Office and the Board of Commissioners? Uh, so that, you know, these agenda items will reach the Board of Commissioners, uh, well before the election date?
That is certainly something I can, uh, mention to the Elections Director to make sure, uh, that when, or to ask that when the Board of Elections, uh, approves it on their end, that, um, after that, that it comes to the Board as, I, I'm not sure of the timeline of when. I can't recall off the top of my head when the Board of Elections approved theirs, uh, approved it. But I'm sure it was before, uh, today, because there was a special election and an advance period and all that kind of stuff. So, yes, I can make sure that, uh, that is communicated to the Board of Elections and the Director.
I have another question for Director Dozier, but, um, if I can address it to you. It's, um, around the, I know this is the Board of Election that's hosting, uh, their election for, uh, the education spot that the East lost. But isn't there also a statewide election coming up, the primaries for the Public Service Commissioners in, in June? And what is the process to ensure that the county will have elections on dates that line up with any other scheduled statewide elections? So that the county isn't holding two separate elections within six months of each other?
Well, there's a s- state law that speaks to when, uh, when elections are held. Uh, and it varies based on whether it's an odd year or an even year. And so, um, those are pretty much like, they are not, uh, they're not suggested dates, they are mandatory dates. And so you could conceivably have two elections that are held on the same day if it's like separate issues that's sometimes outside the county's control. But there is, uh, I'm not aware, standing here, of a situation where you would have an election that does not occur on the statutory mandat, mandated dates.
That, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying. I just, I'm, I'm curious if, um, there's a statewide election, uh, for the, the primary in June for a Public Service Commissioner, like the entire state of Georgia will be voting. Uh, and there are counties that are having special elections. I'm just curious, like specifically for Clayton County, how we can better sync our election dates? So if there's already a statewide scheduled election, any special called county, city, or Board of Edu, Education elections can also be held on dates that were already scheduled for statewide elections?
I can certainly, um, talk with you a little bit more about that in detail, um, as we come up to those dates.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, is that it? All right.
I don't know if there was a vote.
Need a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next, we will move on to our consent agenda, Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash fifty-one.
Okay. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five fifty-one is a resolution authorizing, authorizing Clayton County to engage an attorney to provide guidance on ethics issues, to authorize the Chief Staff Attorney to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget as needed to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
All right. At this time, I need a motion for this item. So moved. Can I get a second? If not, the motion fails. Um, I do wanna make a statement, um, I do wanna make a statement at this time that I brought this up because we were having, um, issues with board members, um, particular board members. And the issue was, when I asked, um, Mr. Reed about was something, um, there was a, there was something on March, I want to say it was March first. Um, Commissioner Allen had voted, um, to remove something from the agenda in regards to her husband. And so when I spoke to Mr. Reed about that, and also some issues that we had with some emails, um, in which that came over from the jail, in which Commissioner Allen also inserted herself in those emails. Now, we've been asking about when is the Ethics Board coming? And when are we going to be taking things to the Ethics Board? However, to avoid taking anyone to the Ethics Board, that is why I brought this up, because I wanted to make sure that we had someone to speak with in regards to a, a possible, um, attorney that could tell us what is ethically right and what is ethically wrong. When I spoke to Mr. Reed, he stated that he did, he was not an ethics attorney. And so when things like that come up, and we as board members, we wanna make sure that we not only are policing each other, but policing ourselves. That is why I brought this up. And for the record, I wanna make sure to let everyone know that we wanna make sure that we have someone who can tell us the, the ethics and that can tell us if we're... and that can tell us if we're ethically right or ethically wrong. Mr. Reed, can you speak on that as well?
What I can say is that House Bill fourteen forty-four, which was passed last year, created a Board of Ethics. That Ethics Board is required to have its own attorney, which I am not that attorney. So I'm the attorney for the Board of Commissioners, which is why I don't provide ethics opinions, because that's through the Ethics Board of Ethics.
All right. Well, thank you again, and we'll move on to the next one, Resolution 2025-52.
Resolution 2025-52 is a resolution to provide a statement of policy regarding the preparation of the annual county budget to rescind the authority of the Chair of the Board of Commissioners to exercise initial budgetary policymaking functions, to set a budget officer, to provide an effective date and for other purposes.
All right. At this time, I need a motion.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
All right. Any discussion at this time? Okay. Well, I'm going to discuss it, because I just want the public to know this. The reason why the Chair does the budget is because we have resolution, we have a resolution, I'm sorry, not a resolution, but we have OCGA thirty-six dash eighty-one dash four. Since the late eighties, to my knowledge, the county has always had this subsection and to allow the Chair to prepare an exas, an executive budget. And as late as two thousand and nine, the Board issued a resolution under two, two thousand and nine dash sixty-five to make sure that the Chair continues to do the budget. So I am asking this Board that I continue to do the budget, that everyone on this Board is responsible for the budget. However, I wanted to make sure that everyone knows that, again, the Chair is responsible for this budget. I am also, in Section C, it says, "Nothing in this code section shall preclude the utilization of an executive budget under which an elected or appointed official authorized by charter or local law and acting as the chief executive of the governmental unit exercises the initial budgetary policymaking function while another individual designated as provided in this code section as budget officer exercises the administrative functions of the budgetary preparation and control." Again, I just think that to remove me from doing the budget is, is not right. We have, have always had the Chair of the county to do the budget. And I just think that the people that are trying to do this are being vindictive. Also, can you add to that as well, Mr. Reed, anything that you need to add as far as the executive orders of the budget?
Uh, like in, like specifically, what would you like me to respond to?
Well, you don't have to. I'll just say what I have to say. I'm just gonna make this statement. The only reason that Commissioner Allen is doing this is because it's being vindictive for me exposing the alleged overtime fraud and corruption at the Clayton County Sheriff's Office. The whole Board has received emails regarding open records requests that pinpoint alleged overtime fraud by the sheriff and his staff. It's my fiduciary responsibility to look into the emails must as, as much as it is Commissioner Allen and everyone on this Board's responsibility. Thus, as I started to pull the evidence, I found that there were many, there was much validity to the allegations. Therefore, the only reason she is doing this is because I have turned everything in to the proper authorities. So no matter what the news says, I fulfill my responsibility to the, to the citizens of Clayton County. At this point, any vote that is done like this is either to impede or retaliate against me for ordering this investigation. You all may go ahead and vote. Thank you.
Can we keep this comment, this to this resolution? On this resolution, I do have one question about a definition. The part where it says to exercise initial budgetary policymaking functions, what exactly does that mean? I know in the past that Commissioners, as long as it did not violate quorum rules, were allowed into the budget hearings.
So initial means exactly that, initial. So the, the Chair would provide the initial budget, provide, and through, through the Finance Director or the CFO, depending on what year those positions were there, and then they would, the Finance Director or CFO would present that to the Board, the, the budget to the Board, but the Chair would provide that initial policymaking analysis before it came to the Board.
Is there anything that defines the deliverables and the timeline within that?
Other than that the Board has to adopt the Board, the budget by, by, you know, June, June thirtieth, yeah.
Thank you.
And lastly, before we make a decision tonight, I just wanna let the Board members know also, Section two dash thirty-seven oh five, Section B states that making decisions on policy matters only after the discussion at, excuse me, only after the discussion at publicly held meetings. So that means that we, as a Board, should be discussing this first before we go into making a decision. So we are breaking our own code tonight if we vote this down. Is that not correct, Mr. Reed?
What I can say is that you all have a guidelines, that you all do a code of conduct to, to discuss policy matters. The decision of whether there's a violation would require a vote from each of you all and, and all four of you all to indicate whether any one of you all were in violation. So I can't say that doing this is a violation, because that's a decision that's made among the four, the five of you.
Or the three, which one, okay.
Well, actually, no. In order for, for, in order for a code of conduct violation, it has to be basically unanimous against the individual commissioner that is being accused of violating the code of conduct.
Well, at this point in time, is there any more discussion?
Oh, yes. All right. So in reviewing the resolution, I just, I want to confirm that this resolution is creating a policy that would allow the entire Board to have access and allow for more transparency and accountability in the budget-making process. It doesn't, it does not impede the full Board's ability to, or the Chairwoman's ability to review the budget. However, it does open and allow access for the full Board of Commissioners to be able to review the budget before finalized. Is that correct?
This resolution has two purposes. The first is to rescind the authority of the Chair to exercise the initial budgetary policymaking functions. The second is to designate the Deputy Chief Financial Officer over budgets and grants as that such position is currently designated as the Budget Officer for purposes of state law, which is thirty-six eighty-one four A. That's the two purposes of, of this resolution.
Are you ready for the vote, board? Any more discussion?
I, I just have a question. How does this resolution differ from what we already have? And our, other than the verbiage of not having the Chair to do the budget, which is what has been done for years, and we always get a chance, all the Commissioners get a chance to look at the budget and vote. But as far as those meetings are concerned, only one Commissioner at a time, because we can't have the three. We can only have two. So I mean, what's, what's different? Why, what's with this as opposed to what we do anyway?
If this passes, what it will do is have, instead of the Chair being the person who makes the initial policymaking decision, it will start with the Budget Officer. That's the primary difference. So I'm not sure what else to-
Well, I just want us to be careful. You know, let's look at down the road here, you know. While we're voting on something or presenting something for right now, then, you know, we need to think ahead and all, because this won't be the same Board always. You know, I, I just want us to be careful with that.
Well, again, I'm going to still be in the meetings. I will still be looking at the budget. I will still be making sure that I take care of the citizens of Clayton County, no matter what this Board chooses to do. So I am fine with whatever way they wanna go. I'm fine. Yep. And again, I give the, the Board members, we definitely, we've all been transparent. Again, Board members can see the, can see anything they need to know about the budget at any time. I am just following the budget process that is here, and that's what I'm going to continue to do. All right, are you ready for the vote? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. All right, the ayes have it, and the motion passes, three to two. Again, thank you, Board, I mean, thank you, and we're going to move right along.
The next item is Resolution 2025-53, which is a resolution to adopt the general fund, fund balance policy of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
And, all right, this Resolution twenty-two-five dash fifty-three, all right. At this point in time, I need a motion.
So moved.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right. All right, are you ready for discussion? Anybody want to discuss anything from this resolution?
Oh, yes.
We'll start, I'll start from the right of me, and then I'll come on down. That's fine.
Oh, I, I just had a, a comment on the general fund balance policy, that this appears to be a recommendation from the ACCG, which does recommend that counties have a general fund balance. This is a conversation that's come up before in discussions around the miller rate increase, as well as the county participating or not participating, and the home set valuation freeze. And it is a, I believe, an incredible opportunity for Clayton, for us to shore up the Clayton County budget in the future by having a policy that will ensure that we are keeping our general fund at appropriate levels.
Thank you. Commissioner Allen?
No questions.
Commissioner, again- Again, I want us to be careful on what we're doing here. We're saying to keep, basically, to have in the general fund, and I get, we need to know what the general fund is right now, to me, you know, before we do this, because we're saying have it at least what, four, four months, four to six months? So why are we passing something if we don't have that on hand right now?
It's, go ahead.
So again, let's be careful not to pass something, and we're already in violation. So I think we need to discuss this more and find out where we are with the fund balance. And, I mean, I love ACCG or whatever, but a lot of times they're talking about counties that have money.
Yep.
That have a lot of money. So we, I don't wanna put myself in a position, or our, the county, in a position where we're saying, let's have four to, four, four to six months on hand. What does the, the certifying, what, Moody's and all that, what is, what do they say about that?
Come on, Flores, please.
They recommend fund balances based on the particular county, because based on the county or city, it depends on your particular circumstances. So with Clayton County, they recommend that we keep a stronger fund balance, because Delta makes up a larger percentage of our tax status. Right. So if we're passing something and we don't fit it at this moment, I mean, why are we doing that? Anybody can answer that? Anybody answer?
Board members? Well, I'm just gonna say this. We have, we're in the middle of budgeting, and we wanna make sure that as we look at the different departments that are coming in, we wanna make sure that we balance this budget. We also have our sheriff, who's gonna be presenting tonight as well, that's probably gonna be hitting our budget as well. So how are we gonna stay in the four to six months that, 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 that we're proposing if we're gonna be having our fund balance possibly hit, or our budget possibly hit, when people are gonna be asking for more money? Can you answer that? Or will we be able to not touch our fund balance with different departments and things like that if we have to pay more money, especially into the sheriff's budget?
Well, let, let me say this before we get an answer. You say, how can we stay?
Yeah.
No, we gotta get there first.
Yeah, we gotta get there first.
So I mean-
So if, so if we're not even there, and then people are gonna be hitting us again, see, but I'm gonna let you answer that first.
Can we, can we study this?
Yeah, can we really study this?
No, I'm asking the Board.
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking too.
Can we study this and find out?
We're on the same page. Commissioner?
You've asked them questions. First, let's, let's, let's pretty much answer these questions in the order they come in.
The initial question you asked would be entirely up to the Board. The Board votes on the budget, any budget amendments coming forth. So it's, the Board sets the policy. Whatever the Board dictates to finance, finance will follow.
Okay, not meaning to put you on the spot, but what would it take, what amount of money would it take for us to fit this description right now? What's a four-month budget for us to have, not, not including six months? What, what is the four, what amount of money?
Four months of operating expenditures would be a hundred and four million.
A hundred and four million. Okay, this, well, we haven't done the budget and all, but right now, where are we?
Approximately seventy-nine million.
So we're short.
Yes, ma'am.
Board, let's be careful, please.
Because then that means that's gonna be a tax increase for the taxpayers. Mr. Davis?
Does a general, well, does our general fund balance affect our bond rating?
Yes.
And so that affects our ability to borrow money for cer, any type of projects that we may have on, that we may have a need for, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And if they come in and look at what we have on file, which would be something if, if this were to pass tonight, and, and see what we actually have, I think that would automatically negatively affect how we are graded.
So basically, if we passed, if they passed this resolution, it would, it would be like we're going against ourselves, because-
No, no, not at all.
Yes, it would, because at this, if we pass this resolution, there's no way in the world we're gonna be at the hundred and four million, or a hundred and four million when it's time for, you know, when you do the budget. We won't be there. And if we have to hit the budget with any additional monies, we definitely won't be there. We won't have that four to six-
May I finish my questions, please?
You didn't ask a question, but you can't ask-
I did ask her a question.
Sorry, you can't ask to be, to be, to go-
Well, I was cut off while I was asking.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It's okay. So, I, I mean, granted, this is not saying we have to be at that, at that level tomorrow. We can do this over time, the same way you would do a household budget, because I'm short in my house, that's not gonna mean, mean I'm not gonna start saving over time. So in essence, as we move forward, I think this is good to have a policy in place that suggests that we want to move toward financial, a strong financial health for Clayton County. That is not saying, take it, put it there, we can't pay our bills or we can't use it. We can still use our general fund, correct? Am I right or wrong? We can still use that, even if we got to that certain level, based off what the policy does suggest.
As far as the policy, I mean, I'm not sure if you wanna talk regarding that.
So are you saying if you adopt this policy and there's a issue that comes up that would take fund balance below four months, are you precluded from doing that?
Correct.
No.
With the way it's written, we are not precluded from doing that. Yeah.
May I offer a suggestion, Board?
And thank you for being recognized.
Oh, did I? Oh, I'm sorry. But is it okay for, for us to wait until we reach at least that four-month amount? And if we decide we want to pass this, but at least we will be abiding by our own resolution? So again, let's, to me, let's discuss it.
Chairwoman, may I speak, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if there is no policy, to your comment, Commissioner Hambrick, if there is no- if there is no rule to say you have to get to four months, we will never get to four months. This is why I suggested us put this in place. Because honestly, the county finance is not that great. So having policies like this established will increase our financial health. So if we have a policy that says we need to get to four to six months, we have no choice but to get to six to four months. And this is why I would like this in place, thank you. Chairman, no comments?
To echo the sentiments of Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Allen, and to Commissioner Hambrick's point, as we are still in the early stages of crafting the 2026, 2027 budget, I believe the timing is actually perfect for us to adopt the general fund balance policy as we can use it as we are, as the Board is crafting the upcoming year's budget, so that we can, so that we can move forward in getting to that four to six-month general fund balance policy.
And let me say, I do agree with that, but at the same time, do you understand? Because that's not the understanding that I think all of us got as a Board. So I guess, you know, everybody wants to switch it up in the middle of the road now. So do you understand that, Ms. Angela?
Do I understand the fund balance policy, or?
The, the policy. Are you, are you in agreement that if we put this policy forward, that, I don't know, is it, that we will build up to that? Or can we put a policy forward to build up to that?
Once again, it's the pleasure of the Board. If the Board directs us in that policy, then we have to try to move towards that policy, but that decision is completely the Board's decision.
And to Mr. Reed, is that the way this policy reads?
That this policy says that you have to, at the time of adoption, so the first sentence says, "The fund balance policy is intended to provide guidelines during the preparation of and deliberations on the annual budget to ensure that sufficient reserves are maintained for unanticipated expenditures or revenue shortfalls, and to preserve flexibility throughout the fiscal year to make adjustments in funding for programs approved in connection with the annual budget." I don't see anything that says specifically that the fund balance must be at four months at the time of adoption.
And I kind of agree with Madam Chair on a portion of this. I think there should be something amended to this to have a timeframe.
Yes.
A timetable to make this adequate. We want four to six months, we know we're not going to, well, let's just say, the likelihood of us having it by July 1st is not there. So if we set, put amended it to, to state over the next, I'm just going to throw a number, twenty-four months to get there, this policy is in place to help us get there and attain those goals. I think that would be proper to do and healthy for us to do.
And I said four to six months, because when she, when CFO Merrick gave it to us, she said it was between, we had to have four to six months. So that was in the original, when we talked about it last week. It was like, you know, four to six months, and I think she said, what, ten, was it ten percent or thirty percent?
I, I believe there were a couple of metrics. One was a percentage, one was by month. There were a couple of metrics kicked around. But if the Board wants to put in a schedule for when this can happen, then there can be a tabling until next board meeting, or whenever the Board decides they want to put it, and then we just make that language, bring it back to the Board if, if there's a timeline that you all have decided that you want to, for an aspiration.
I have a question.
Okay. I'm going to start over here, and then I'll come to you. Commissioner Hambrick?
Okay, and, and in that, discussing what Commissioner Davis recommended and all, and if, in that same scenario, if we put the language in, if it's not met in the twenty-four months, what happens?
Again, these are, these are guidelines, it's not intended to be punitive, because somehow you all are sanctioned or anything like that for not having four months.
Well, I mean, I like that suggestion.
But it is, you can have a timeline that says, you know, by so-and-so day, we would like to have, you know, a four to six-month pa, fund balance, and, and to maintain that within that, you know, within that timeframe.
I, I agree with studying it.
Yeah, so would y'all want to table it, or do y'all want to? Go ahead, okay, I'm sorry.
Question, Attorney Reed. So I hear, I hear the, the suggestions around adding an amendment or potentially tabling this resolution, but I just, I want to make sure that we're not adding too much on this policy, because in my understanding, this is a policy to do one item, which is to have a policy that says that the Clayton County budget general fund balance will be or should be between four to six months. And that, that is a policy that will be lasting in perpetuity. But if an amendment was added to that policy, I fear that it would affect that, the ongoing policy of that, so it, sorry. I want to make sure that we're not adding too much to the one policy that adds in a timeframe, and perhaps a timeframe on when we attain, or we move towards that four to six-month general policy, policy, should be a separate resolution. So that way, it's not tied to the longstanding policy. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. So, and to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying, that adopt a policy and then adopt a resolution that says, a separate resolution that says that we will, our goal is to, maybe like a policy statement saying that for the fund balance, we intend to, by whatever date you put in here, get to a point where we're at four to six months of general fund, or something along those lines.
And that could be a separate resolution.
Resolution, yeah. Do y'all want to, so?
Sounds like we need to discuss.
Okay, we got a motion on the table. Commissioner Hambrick?
No, I was just saying, sounds like we need to discuss this, table it and discuss this.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to add one thing from the operations side of the House. I think it would be important for myself and the COO to kind of have an understanding of timeframes and goals and guidelines, which we need to move the respective operations side of the House, because we have FIRE, PD, Sheriff, Corrections. Everybody's coming for additional personnel, additional programming, additional expenses that has to be taken into account. So if we, from an operations end of the House, it's, it's not our job to set policy, it's our job to make your policy come to life. So we need to understand what the goals are, because we have to work with finance. And as we all know, everybody is asking for additional personnel to handle whatever the increase in services are. But if we don't understand what that goal is, there's no way we can try to control what the ask is. And then how do we continue to make sure we provide services for our citizens with some level of control? We can't just shut them down for three to four years and say, we're not going to do any type of enhancements until we get to the four to six months. But if there's not a timeline for that, then we don't know how to control that. So we're really kind of flying blind. So I just kind of want to make sure that as you're debating it, that we kind of understand what the goal is for you to get to that, because if we took the ask that we've kind of already mitigated for this year, we could set you back by another three to four months, just in one budget cycle. And that's not what we're trying to do, but I think we need to understand as we're prepping that budget initially, which we're doing now, we need to understand what your goals and objectives are. When do you want to see us get to that four to six months of budget? The FIRE fund is different, we run off a percentage, or they do now. We, we maintain ten percent of our reserve fund for rainy days and operations, and we've dipped below that a couple of times, but, and then we've also been above it, so. But we understand what the goal and the metric is, so we know how to craft a budget to make sure we always maintain that. So I think having that guidance is going to be critical for operations to be able to make it happen. Just wanted to make sure I put our two cents in.
All right. Commissioner Reed?
Oh, so I'd like to make a suggestion, since there is a motion on the floor. If we approve Resolution 2025-53 for the general fund ballot, fund, fund, fund balance policy tonight, it sounds like we would have an opportunity for operations and finance to perhaps make a recommendation or a suggestion on an appropriate timeline to get to that four to six-month balance, whatever that timeframe looks like, and perhaps bring that to the April meeting.
And I want to say one thing.
Commissioner Allen?
To Chief Murkison. This resolution does not say that you cannot ask, or we have to shut down operations. Were you at the work session last week?
No, ma'am, but I watched it.
Okay, so when CFO Merrick stated, if we need to tap into it, we still can. There will be a, in parentheses, when the department is requesting money, it would say, this will come out of the general fund balance. And then that's when Commissioner Reed, you know, that whole thing. So this is not saying that if we need, we have, we absolutely cannot use the funds that's in here, although we have a four to six-month balance. It's just like any budget in your house. You have your savings and you have your check-ins, right? If you need to tap into your savings, you tap into your savings if you need to. You're putting money to the side out of maybe expenses. We can put a small percent towards that every month, so we can build. It's, it's basic, just, just like you do your household stuff. So it's, you're overthinking it, it's not that complicated. It's just saying, we need a healthy savings account, because Clayton County does not. So this is all this policy is saying. When we get there, we didn't put a timeline on here, because we can put piece by piece, little by little, just how you do your savings account at your home.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that, and I didn't suggest that we would shut down operations. My comment was simply, given the number of personnel requests we get every year, help us understand what percentage of that you want us to try to put in the budget. Because if we were to simply take all of the personnel requests that we have right now, as I stated, we would set you back another four to five months, of trying to get you to the four to six months. So I didn't suggest that we have to shut it down. I fully understand how the budget functions in the county, and how the general fund balance works. My comment was, help guide us to get you where you want to be. That's the only comment I made.
And this is such a crucial time, too, it's budget time.
Perfect time.
As you said, and all, and we, with the ask that we have, and additional funds, really, that will probably hit and make us even minus that, what was that amount, the seventy-nine?
Okay, okay. Just one more second.
One thing that may also help, too, is that looking at the language of the policy versus the synopsis, the language says shall be maintained versus should be, so we could make that change if that would give some ease of mind to the Board in if they feel as if the shall somehow puts you, feels as if you put you in some sort of jeopardy, and just change that to say should.
I agree.
Should, okay. Should, okay. All right. Are you ready for the vote, Board members, at this time?
Question.
Okay.
Do we have to go ahead and make a motion to amend that to, from shall to should, before we vote?
Uh, yes, you can make, because the current policy as stated says shall. So there can be, there can be an amendment to change the word shall to should, that be voted on, and then back to the regular.
So at this time, I need a motion to amend it from shall to should, should to shall.
The other way around.
From shall to should, I had it right the first time. All right, from shall to should, all right, I need a motion.
So moved.
All right, second?
Second.
All right. In the discussion, are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstention, the ayes have it and the motion passes. Now for the motion with, from the shall to should, should to shall.
Now, now it's, now it's the Resolution fifty, twenty, twenty-five, fifty-three, the one that's currently on the table.
All right, for the motion currently on the table, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Oh, hold on a second.
Can we confirm? So the first, you made a motion to add an amendment on the Resolution twenty, twenty-five.
From shall to should, should to shall.
And now we're voting on the full twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty-five, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, so are you ready for the motion, twenty, twenty-five, dash, fifty-three, with the amendment in it? All right. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstention, the ayes have it and the motion passes, thank you. All right, next, our presentation from the Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Levon Allen, please come forward.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and other Commissioners. The CFO has asked that I bring this amendment during the Sheriff's presentation for the Board's review and approval. The Sheriff is available for any questions. This budget amendment, budget amendment two, dash, twenty-eight, in the amount of fourteen million, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and three dollars, appropriates funds to cover salaries, overtime benefits, other contract service fees, along with regular operating expenses for the remainder of the fiscal year 2025 for the Sheriff's Office.
Madam?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I got this late, this afternoon, it came earlier, but I didn't see it until late. So you're saying this budget year, not the budget we're working on for next year?
Correct, this is an appropriation from fund balance.
Okay, this is what's needed through June.
Correct, through June thirtieth of this year.
Any questions?
We're waiting on the presentation?
No, the CFO sent an email to all of you all, if you got it. She stated that it was an error, and this was just a budget amendment, and I was available for any questions.
Oh, can you explain this?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm glad you asked that question. So June of 2024, when I was before you all, when I was asking for additional funds, that's for about fourteen million last year due to the Sheriff's Office not being properly funded. In that June of 2024 meeting, you were the Vice Chair at the time, and you asked, you said, hey, Finance, because the Sheriff's asking for this additional funds, have we addressed the concerns in reference to the Sheriff's budget, so we do not be in the same predicament next year? I answered and said, no, we have not. You stopped me and said, Sheriff, I'm not asking you, I'm asking Finance. And you asked Finance, did they properly staff me for what I needed to, so we would not be in the same predicament today? Finance gave you a roundabout, clouded answer, and I still said no. And then again, the Chairman at the time explained to the Board that, again, if this was not fixed in the budget, we will continue to be at the same predicament to this year. To the right, you will see, this is the excerpt of the minutes from last year's meeting. If you scroll down, it said, scroll down for, for me. Commissioner Hambrick answers, are we being properly budgeted for the next fiscal year to Finance? Ms. Merrick stated, it goes off historical data. Andrew from Finance, Sheriff's Assistant, Creston and Mountford, part-time, and he was awarded it. If you scroll down, Commissioner Hambrick says, if we do not get these numbers together, we're going to come to the same point next time. Chairman Turner, at the time, advised, the Sheriff's Department is not balanced at this time. Chairman Turner advised the Sheriff's Department is not balanced, and due to not being properly staffed in certain areas, if he rearranges and gets the properly staffed, hopefully we will not come down this road again. We did not address the issues of the Sheriff's Office. And because of that, we are in the same predicament, the same amount of money that was asked for last year.
Sheriff, excuse me.
Commissioner Hambrick?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're, you're, you're okay. I understand.
Who's we, is that, are you saying we is, us we or you we?
Whole as a whole.
Okay.
At the, at last year, I asked for addition, and there were no additions added. And I stated it at that board in last year. So now here we are in the same predicament, and I will state again today, if we do not address the issues in the budget and properly staff the Sheriff's Office, again, in twenty twenty-six, I will be asking for an additional fourteen million dollars.
Okay, um. Do we know about your staff? I mean, your staffing, is that something that should come to us, that we should see, or does finance get that? To see about staffing, uh, because I, uh, I'm not sure if it was, in the last eighteen, twenty months, I know we did, was it correctional officers? Uh, you asked for, I think, seven, and then another Commissioner said, no, let's give him twenty something. Anybody remember that? Twenty something.
So that was outside of that, that was outside of this request. That was prior to, that was about maybe six months prior to this request. But that was for deputy sheriffs. This, this, that was to, that was, the deputy sheriff's request for the thirty-three, that handled evictions. Yeah, that handled, provided, uh, relief for evictions, providing release for civil papers, and providing relief for, um, additional deputies in the, inside, in the, ah, inside of the courtrooms. That's what that particular ask was for. But doing that request, I'm glad you mentioned that, the Chairman at the time said, Sheriff, don't you need correction officers? I said, Chairman, I'm glad you asked that question because that's going to be my next, next ask. And of course, I did ask for the correction officers, and the correction officers were denied. And again, I asked for an additional, um, two hundred correction officers minimum at the, at the Sheriff's Office. Let me give you an example. Fulton County Jail, which is our biggest, our biggest jail here, uh, our capital here in Georgia, right now, today, Sheriff LeVatt has sixteen hundred inmates in his main jail, sixteen hundred. He has about two hundred and fifty detention officers working, but he's budgeted for three hundred. The Department of Justice came in and they did a report, and they recommended that he have about five hundred and fifty to deal with his sixteen hundred inmates. Today, I have eighteen hundred and seventy-five. It fluctuates daily. Last week sometime I had about two thousand, and that's with me releasing inmates daily. So with me having over, close to two thousand inmates, I have a hundred and twenty-three people doing what he has, close to three hundred, for fifteen hundred. We have to get properly staffed when we're talking about correction officers. The Clayton County Sheriff's Office has seen its most dangerous inmates in this year, most dangerous. Has never been as high. We have never had as many people who have either committed murder or attempted to commit murder in Clayton County's jail. Right now, right now I have about two hundred and sixty that actually are charged with murder, and I got about another seven hundred that's, that's charged with attempted, attempted murder. So I have a close to a thousand people have, who has taken someone's life or attempted to take someone's life. We're not even getting into rape, murder, I mean, we're not getting into rape or, uh, armed robbery. We're not getting into all that. Not getting into that. We're just talking about someone who has taken someone's life or attempted to take someone's life. Every day that, that my officers go into that jail and they feed an inmate, they take him, they take him for services, the inmate is allowing the officer to come out safe, to go home to their families. They're allowing it. It can change just like that. The jail is overcrowded, and these are human lives at stake. I've received a call almost closely from everybody on this thing, on this board, to say, hey, someone I know is in jail. Say any way that you can make sure that they're safe. That should be the requirement for everyone. You take that orange uniform off of them. You take that red uniform off of them. You strip down their skin. They have a beating heart. Take it serious, because it takes one asshole cop for one of you all to be in jail.
Sheriff, please watch your mouth, please. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Amber?
I, I just want to say, um, and I just want to make it very clear, as we started the budget process, um, I did an open records request, um, to the Sheriff. I asked him for all of his financials so we could start working together and looking at his budget. We, this board has been getting emails in regards to overtime, alleged overtime fraud in the jail. We have been asking, I've asked Sheriff Allen to also give me a copy of all of the people who work in the jail, from his correction, uh, security officers all the way to the top. Um, I did pull that today, and so now I want to see if the people who are working, where they say they're supposed to be working, from the secretaries up to the deputies, are where they're actually supposed to be. I also gave Sheriff Allen a suggestion of looking at getting someone to help him with the budget, with his budget, such as a CFO, um, such as what we have with the board. It is not our responsibility to balance the budget of the jail. But when we give you fifty million dollars every July, I cannot, I, I want to ask this question to, um, to you, Angela. If we give Sheriff Allen another fourteen million dollars today, is that going to raise taxes for our citizens? Would that impede on our, on our budget as well as our, as our reserve?
Right now, the fourteen million that's proposed in this budget amendment would reduce fund balance. It would come from fund balance for this current fiscal year.
So that means that when you say reduce, it would come out of our fund balance, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And that is our, what we call in the school system, we say reserve or for, for everyone to see that. So if it reduced our fund balance, again, how would, would we have to go, go up on taxes? I'm just going to give a scenario. Would we have to go up on taxes for our citizens? How would that, that affect us?
Not if, not this current year that we're appropriating it from fund balance.
Okay.
And we're working on the budget for next year, so it depends on what you decide, what the board decides to do in the fiscal year twenty-six budget.
Well, I'm just going to say for me, um, I just feel, I, I know that, you know, and I want to make sure we take care of the jail. But every year, just as Sheriff Allen has said, we keep putting back, putting back in the jail, but we keep coming back to this with the jail. But I just believe that he needs to do his part as well, and that means looking at his budget and balancing his budget. You can't just keep coming back asking us, because even this year, not just saying it was Sheriff Allen, there were some other things that impeded our fund balance that made us have to go up on taxes. But I do not want to keep going on, up on taxes of our citizens. We've got to make, we've got to ask Sheriff Allen to stay within his budget, which is fifty million dollars of what he gets every year. And we've all got to work together so we can help him as well, as a board, and we have to collaborate, when I talk about those three Cs, so we can make sure that he is where he needs to be, and he has, he doesn't have to keep coming back asking us for money this year, next year, and years to come.
Yes.
I, I do. Um, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, in last year's budget hearing, Sheriff, didn't the Sheriff request a find, somebody to handle, to look over the finances, his financials?
He may have, once again, like, we raised taxes two and a half mil, so we did as much as we could within the confinement of our revenues for last fiscal year.
I agree, the Sheriff has to handle his budget, but we've got to make sure that we are, um, supplying him with the adequate resources to handle that budget. And so I think there is a balancing act here that we've got to find out. But I want to recall, he did ask for, um, some type of accounting person to begin to handle that budget last year, as well as some other things that we did say no on, but that was one of them, I believe.
Sheriff, hold on for one minute. Attorney Reed, do you know anything about that from last year, or can you let us know?
I don't specifically recall the, the details of the Sheriff's, um, the Sheriff's ask, but, I mean, he's right here.
He's right here.
He can tell.
Thank you. Uh, yes, you're absolutely correct. Um, I was appointed Sheriff December twenty twenty-two, and since December of twenty twenty-two, in each budget meeting, I have requested a, uh, Chief Financial Officer. I've requested a budget person. I've requested a, um, an attorney and a grant person in each year. It's been denied, denied, denied.
I just remember one last year, not the years before.
Commissioner Hamburgh?
Do we do that, or is that in your budget, that you do that?
So, excellent question. So during the budget process, and I'm, I'm loving you asking this question. So to the prior thing, everyone will be able to know what the budget is before it's presented by the, uh, Chair. But what happens is, uh, the, I went into a budget meeting with the Chair with an ask, and then the Chair says, I won't give you this, but I'll give you this. I won't give you this, but I'll give you this. And then we come out of the meeting with what the Chair recommends to the board. So during those meetings is when all those things were pulled away, all those things that I'm requesting. So to answer your question, did we do that, as in, I would assume you mean the board, during the Chair's meeting that I had before is when those things were pulled.
Specify the Chair. Who was that? That wasn't me.
Well, you've been the Chair for ninety days. I'm, I'm speaking about.
The past Chair.
The past, yes.
Okay, okay, um, okay, so now it's fourteen million something. Okay, now at budget, you got to come before finance, right? With the budget, and you're, and that ask is going to be?
Yes.
What, what is that amount going to be?
So let me explain to how you we got here. In January of twenty twenty-four, that's when the budget is being asked, and they're preparing the budget. So during Janu, during January, February is like the last day that you, of twenty twenty-four, that you, you submit your budget, and it's in. So the budget was already submitted.
No, 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 I'm talking about now.
No, 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 I'm, I'm just explaining how you got here. So then in June, what happened, we, we were saying, hey, the Sheriff needs X amount of dollars because he, he's, we're at the end of that year. So what we did, we adjusted the current year, but then we didn't make any amendments to the, the budget that was submitted. So what should have happened, there should have been a amendment to the current, to the budget that we, when we did the additional fourteen million, and then we should have went back and fixed the budget, but that's, we didn't do that. So now I'm riding out of the, riding out the same budget. We, we as in finance and the Board of Commissioners. So, uh, we should have did two amendments, and we only did one, but we have to properly staff it, and we properly staff it, you won't have the overtime. Even last year, I asked if I, if you just, if you just give me eight million dollars worth of employees, if I, if you're saying, hey, I went over eight million in overtime, give me the employees. Give me the employees, and we won't do overtime. We've only had to do overtime in the previous years because we were not fully staffed. I'm fully staffed now. I just need you to properly staff it.
So, okay, you're fully staffed, but you're not properly staffed?
Correct. Just like I gave you the recommendation when the DOJ came into, to Fulton, they said, he said he's, he's at three hundred, but he needs five fifty. What I'm saying is, I'm at one twenty. I'm at one twenty with two thousand inmates. Fulton's at three hundred with fifteen hundred inmates. I need additional, I need additional COs so that I can, won't have a CO doing overtime. And there's different things that come into play, just like I explained to you, we have more murderers there. Well, one person can do something to where he now becomes a two-man escort. So now I have to have two people there or someone to work overtime just to, just to handle one person. So the overtime becomes because I don't have the person, the personnel to fill, fulfill those positions.
Two things. One is, what, what's your ask for, uh, Budget twenty, what budget, we're in twenty, FY twenty-six. What's your ask?
It's, it's to increase my, my budget from fifty-seven million to eighty million.
Eighty million?
Yes.
Okay, so fourteen million now, and eighty million starting July one.
Correct. That is, that is what my, that is what my future ask would be.
Okay, and, and in, in, uh, defense of, I guess, a little bit of the previous administration, I think once we give you the money, it's up to you to hire.
Absolutely.
ABC or whoever.
And I can do it. When I, when I came into being Sheriff, I was about forty percent staffed. In six months, I was able to get, to get fully staffed. So, so getting the people is not the issue. Right now I have, I have applicants, um, that apply to the Sheriff's Office every day. And I can tell you right now, there's other areas that don't have people to apply every day. I have a minimum of, average of ten people every day that applies for the Sheriff's Office. So filling the positions is not going to be the issue. Getting the positions is what I need.
Sheriff, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What is your total overtime? How much have you spent in overtime so far?
Not looking at, I believe it was one point six. Yes.
In overtime, his budget was four point five. He spent to date five point four, but by the time we end the year, he's expected to exceed his overtime budget by three point three million.
That's a lot of money.
Which, if you look at the historic of that, last year, it's, it's the same amount. It's the same amount.
So can I, can I say, because I don't want you to say I'm interrupting you. Can I ask you just one question? When do we get this? When, because we're, 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 we're offering the help. I've talked to you. I want us to get to a point where you're within your budget, just as others, sheriffs in their other jurisdiction. But I just want to say this, you've got to sit now with us, and I don't know how we, we're going to collaborate, whatever we need to do. But we've got to, if, if you're saying, hey, I need help, then I won't, I, I want to give the help. But we've got to be all willing to sit down and look at this budget and say, you're going to stay within this budget. This is what we're giving you. This is, you're going to stay, just like, just like you have a budget at home, a budget needs to be put to that jail. And we need to stay within that budget, so every year, we're not coming back saying, I need fourteen million here, I need fourteen million there. We've sent CGL in for, to do a lot of repairs for the jail. We need to also get that back, the, the report back from them as well. Um, and so as we look at that, the vandalism, the overtime, everybody has to do their part. It can't just be on the Board of Commissioners. It has to be you working with us and us working with you, because we want to make sure that we don't keep coming back, and it's not about being divisive, but it's about, again, we all have a fiduciary responsibility to take care of the taxpayers' money, and we cannot keep wasting money. When we're getting, when we're getting emails talking about overtime and this and the other, there has to be a medium where things have to be stopped and where we all work together. So I don't, we, we need to decide how we're going to get there and how we're going to move from there. Anyone else have any comments?
Yes. So, so CGL, uh, Commissioner Hamburgh recommended the study be done, so CGL is currently inside of the jail doing the study?
Excuse me, that was the governor that recommended, uh, CGL, they're doing it for the state of Georgia.
Okay.
That wasn't.
Outstanding.
But I was saying, let us get a start, a head start on that.
Okay, so we got a head start on CGL coming in to see where we were with employment. They started at around October, November. I think we paid three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, somewhere around there, for them to do it. But, um, I am one hundred percent confident that when that study comes back, they're going to say that we're at a hundred and twenty COs right now, and we're going to, I'm one hundred percent confident they're going to say that we're way below that. So if, if, you know, you want to wait for the expert to come in and tell you that, but I'm telling you right now, I'm the elected official, I'm telling you what, what, that, that it's understaffed. But doing that, we just officially, um, held your feet to the fire, because I know it's going to come back to say I'm, I need a minimum of two hundred, maybe it's going to say three hundred, and then now we're going to have to put up or shut up.
All right. Are we voting on this tonight? Just, just discussion, discussion?
Well, uh, finance, uh, so this fourteen million, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and three dollars, uh, where would that come from?
It's going to be an appropriation from fund balance. Yes.
The one that we want to do, the four months?
Mm-hmm, four to six month thing, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
It's going to be coming, I just said that. That's why I was saying, when we got to this, then now it's about to get hit again.
I have a comment?
Yes, Commissioner Reeves?
Um, oh, there she is. He's right here. Um, Sheriff Allen, thank you for, uh, this presentation and for the town hall that you did on Saturday. It was very informative. And, um, I just wanted to, um, get some clarification on some of the questions that were asked previously. Uh, you had, so you had mentioned that the, the Sheriff's Office is fully staffed, but not properly staffed. And I want to confirm, like, that, that is a conversation that would be had, uh, for the twenty twenty-six fiscal year around, uh, proper staffing?
Yes, I added what, um, what's going to be needed for the next budget so that we won't have this issue. The next year, I've added that into the budget. The next year, I've added that into the budget as I added it last year, but was just told that we weren't giving anybody any, any additional positions.
Oh, and actually, I want to back up. There was something that you had mentioned at, at your town hall that I'd had a follow-up question about, okay. In Clayton, well, all across Georgia, sheriffs are constitutional officers.
Absolutely.
Countywide elected official. However, your funding comes from the Board of Commissioners?
Yes.
And you had mentioned that you had requested your own accountant. So who is, who, who currently manages the finances for your budget?
Yes, so right now I have a accountant technician. If I'm not mistaken, I believe that, that they make about thirty or forty thousand dollars a year, somewhere around in there. And, but they're over the, the budget. So what I need is someone like Ms. Jackson or, or Ms. Merritt over at my office, handling those type of funds and the amount of money that's going through there. I need someone like that and that's what I've requested, but I've been denied.
And so, I'm not sure how to ask this question, so just, just follow me with, on, follow me on this. Okay, so the finance department within the Board of Commissioners, you work with them and your own accountant technician to have like your full bud, your full budget picture? Is that, is that correct? Like, what, what is that breakdown between Clayton County Finance Office and then the finance within your department?
Yes, so the Clayton County Finance handles all of the departments within, within Clayton County. My office not being a department, standalone office, what the board was recommending or the chair was recommending then was that if I need anything, I pick up the phone and I call Ms. Angela and, or Ms. Merritt for questions or concerns. But they're running twenty-two other departments. They're, they're doing their thing. I need my own person that's at my office. If you say, if you're speaking about the budget and you're saying, hey sheriff, you should have did this with the budget, hey sheriff, you should have did this with finance. I ask for the person, put the person there and then we can, then we can deal with it. But you can't complain about something and you don't give me the personnel person to do it.
Heard. Okay, so I just want to confirm what I'm hearing is that we Clayton County and the Board of Commissioners and our finance office has access to your, your full budget?
Absolutely. When we pay bills, when we, when we pay bills, we pick up the phone and call them and ask them to pay it. You know, it's, it's just redundant. I, I just, I just need my, my own person to, to do it.
Okay, and then going back to proper staffing. I mean, based on tonight's presentation and based on the, the fact that the amount that you're requesting this year is almost identical to the amount requested last year, would it be safe to say if you had proper staffing, whatever that number looks like for the Clayton County Jail, if you have proper staffing, that will cut back on your overtime cost?
Absolutely. And it's two-parted, because some of this is salaries and overtime, some of it is lawsuits. If you look into the full-time salaries, I didn't, I didn't hire no more people than, than, than was given to me. But because we lost some civil service lawsuits or we lost lawsuits, that increased that number and that's why that number is over due to payouts. And then, of course, it affects the benefits and the FICA and that's why that's kind of out of whack. And we still have more pending civil service lawsuits that will attack that next year. So stuff like that is gonna, is gonna, that's gonna, that's gonna be there. When you start talking about, when you look into food service and medical costs, those are things that's, as well, that will be there. But yes, to answer your question specifically on overtime and part-time salaries, yes, if we, if we address this, if we address that in, in this coming up budget, we will not see this issue moving forward.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, a comment. I want us to work together.
Yes, ma'am.
And all, because again, I think somebody mentioned, we can't keep coming up with fourteen, you know, with this. And I know we, what our duty is as far as, you know, our obligations to the jail and all. But can we work together so we can find out if you, whatever these positions are? And what you need or, I, I mean, I need more than just a this. You know, thi- this is, you know, I mean, you have the amounts on here, but, you know, I want us to dig a little deeper as far as, well, any, any one of these items, maybe like the medical and all. I mean, is it some, is there a workaround? Because, I mean, this, this is a big ask. It's giving me heartburn.
It, it is, but, but let me, let me explain. One inmate,
And?
One inmate stayed in the jail less than twenty-four hours. We paid him five million dollars. Less than twenty-four hours. If we, we're gonna pay one way or the other. You know, I got mamas call me and say, Sheriff, how did you not see that my son was getting beat up? How do you not hear that my son was getting beat up? We need to have direct supervision in that jail. Meaning we need to increase the number of COs to have direct supervision. I want to put a CO inside the pod with, with the inmates. And that way he can see, hear and smell everything that's going on. But right now, is, is it designed, we got one officer in the tower, one officer on the floor. And there's six sections. There's no way that officer can see anything that's going on, hear anything that's going on. I want to add more officers in there so that when we get a lawsuit, you know, it will, it will bring the lawsuit stuff down. But one inmate, five million, would have took care of that right there.
Again, and I don't know about the others, but can we get a little bit more, before we vote on this, just a little bit more information as to, you know, where the million and some, I mean, just, I would feel better and I can go back and respond to my constituents and, and, and live with myself. I mean, it seems like this, this is a blank check here.
Yep.
So, I mean.
It's, it's, it's not a blank check, you know?
I don't know. How, so when does a decision need to be made? Is it like an emergency for tonight?
Absolutely.
Or can it be two weeks from now, a week from now?
It's, it's imperative that it, that it gets done now. Just like it was, it was, it was an emergency and issue last year. It has to get done so that, so that these services can continue, the employees can be paid. And then we can continue to, to keep people safe at, at the jail.
I'm gonna ask, I, I feel the same way again. We, we can't keep writing blank checks. I've done, I've asked, I've done my open records request. I've asked for more as far as the budget is concerned. I've also asked Angela if we could kind of look at maybe paying what we need to pay by month until we get there versus just writing a blank check. Because again, we need more information. And so I just, I just can't, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility to watch this money. We're already a tier-one county. We're trying to move out of tier-one. We're trying to move up. And we can't just, if you, we're giving you fifty million dollars. And every year is the same thing. And when are we all, we, we, he, he definitely needs Angela. He definitely needs someone to come in. And I'm willing to do that part, but we've got to see the financials first before we keep giving out money. You don't pay, go and pay your financial advisor, whomever does your money, until you can see what you've made or what's going away. And I think as a board, we deserve to see those financials. I've done the open records request. And again, when we're getting emails of people saying overtime, you know, overtime fraud, overtime this, over alleging, we have to make sure that the money is being spent right, especially for our citizens. We have to. And so again, you know, I know, I know we got three, two up here, whatever. But at the end of the day, I'm gonna stand up for what's right for, for the citizens. And y'all are gonna thank me on down the line. Maybe not now, but y'all gonna thank me on down the line that I saved your money. And that we don't keep having to have tax increases. We've got to watch this budget. That's why we're in the position that we're in now, because we've done twenty years of not watching this budget. And we just put something in place tonight to watch the budget, but just like I told you all, as we put that in place, it was gonna be, again, hit by the sheriff. But again, until we see the facts and so, till I see the things on paper that I've asked for and done the open records request, I cannot do that to the citizens of this county. Does anyone else have any discussion at this time? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question for a deputy finance officer. Yes, thank you. Okay, all right, so, so having a better understanding of the sheriff's office and how it receives its funds, is this request, because this request is coming from the finance office and the answer to Commissioner Hambrick's question around the timing for, for payment, is this a request that could have been brought to the board earlier?
Because the sheriff is a constitutional officer, we are not, with other departments, we can require them to do certain things. Currently, he has not extended his overall budget. He still has seven point three million remaining in his budget. He's projected to go over his budget by the end of the fiscal year. So we can bring it, but at that time, he's still gonna have money. Like, right now, he's still at this, right here today, has seven point three million to spend. It's just he's projected to exceed that by the end of the year, the end of the fiscal year.
So would that, Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, okay, if he has seven million now, would that be deducted from this fourteen million? Or this is in addition?
That's in addition. The fourteen point six million from the fund balance. The appropriation would be in addition to the seven point three he has. Seven point three will not take him to the end of the fiscal year. He's gonna need the additional fourteen point six based on his current spend level.
So what is the ask tonight at this point in time? Are y'all?
This is just a presentation.
Just preliminary talk, more or less.
This is just a presentation.
I just wanted to make sure.
That's what I.
Is this just a?
No, no.
But he's asking for this tonight.
There's a budget amendment before you. You can decide to have a meeting later and vote on this. You can vote on this tonight.
Yeah.
At the board's pleasure.
Okay.
My thing is, honestly, I, I think we need to really begin to look at this and find out what is an actual need and what is kind of not a need or a want. We do, we all have to now tighten our belt straps.
Thank you.
Here and begin to move forward correctly. And I think we're, I mean, every department as well as our others are gonna have to begin to find out where we can cut or where we can maintain the quality of services that we have. I would respectfully ask if you could go back, get with finance or whoever it may be to find out how we can reduce this amount, because whatever it is, we're gonna have to come back next year to begin to add that to, it sounds like to add that to his fiscal twenty-six budget as well, so this doesn't happen again.
Or decide, because one thing he said about his fiscal twenty-six budget, he's, currently has fifty-seven million. He wants to go to eighty million. Eighty, to go to eighty million represents an increase of two mils. I don't think, I mean, we have to find another balance, like we can't.
And that's why I said, we're not, I don't think we can, I'm, I'm not ready to.
And I, I'm, again.
What, I didn't hear that. She said, I know, I didn't hear what Commissioner Day said.
I've said, I'm not ready to vote on this, this evening. I think we really have to go back and hopefully, Sheriff, begin to really dive into this hard and say, where can we begin to cut some costs? Because as she stated, to go up twenty-four mils, twenty-four million dollars in the twenty twenty-six budget is, what was it, two mils you, you stated? Yes, and we know we can't do that.
And, and did you want to say anything, Commissioner Hambrick?
No, I wanted to hear what, I mean, I've said all.
Now, based on his invoices, you have a short amount of time because he has the seven point three million. That's not, because his medical costs alone are approximately two point five million a month. So you don't have long to think about this and to, to make the decision. Plus, there could be invoices that are in transit. And with that being the case, as well as salaries and overtime, you don't have.
We've, we've asked to, we've also asked to stop all of the overtime at this time too, correct?
We, we can't run his department.
Well, I know we have, we've asked, we've asked at this point in time to go, but I'm not saying we can, but, but we, we want to help, more or less. So we can't run his department. That's fine. But at the end of the day, look, again, we will be going up two mils. That's the bottom line.
If you give him his full request, he said he's requesting eighty million. To go from the fifty-seven to the eighty million represents two mils.
Yeah, just make sure they're not mixing it. This, this fourteen million is tonight.
That's tonight.
Correct.
She's, she's putting out falsification about it, two mils. That's, that's, that's the future request. We're talking about right now.
I said for FY twenty-six budget, I said the FY twenty-six budget, if we went from the fifty-seven to eighty million that you mentioned earlier.
So, so let me, let me be very clear. When you open this up, I said this last week, you want to cut, let's cut. I won't feed the inmate for six months. Would you like that? Let me do this. How about this? What if I don't send him to Southern Regional for three months? How you want to do it? You know, that's what these things is. Hey, take part times away. You know what? We'll stop part times. I'll shut down the courthouse, because part timers are all the ones that, that warn people. Let's shut down the courthouse and nobody comes in the courthouse and we get sued that way. For overtime, let's, let me do this. Let me do this. Let me shut down a whole unit. Pull the people out. Don't do overtime. Let someone get stabbed and we get, we get a lawsuit. How y'all want to do it? We can cook, we can do it now and do it right, or we can do it in lawsuits. Because I'm sure everyone in here, somebody here got a family member and they gonna be suing y'all too. So how y'all want to do it, on the front end or the back end?
Thank you, Sheriff. So what would be the will of this board at this time?
Okay, I thought we were in discussion.
We just discussion?
There's no.
Okay, there's, I just wanted to know. All right, I'm asking a question. All right. Thank you, Sheriff, and thank you for your information. We're gonna move on next.
I'd like to make a motion. Excuse me. Once again, I don't have the invoices in hand. I'm not sure what might be in his office or, so I'm not sure. It depends on how the invoice is coming, how much time you have. Currently, he has seven point three million, but with his budget, that, that goes quickly with his payroll as well as his medical service fees. But if this board wants to potentially call a special called meeting to discuss this, rather than waiting to April first, that is an option of the board. So it depends on the pleasure of the board as to how they want to handle this amendment.
I, I think we might need to have a special called meeting, because as for me, this evening, not prepared.
Okay, and it would be that you would need to schedule it rather quickly. It would have to be before that April first, April first meeting in April.
Okay, so what's April first? That's the beginning of a?
I don't have a calendar in front of me. I'm just saying it would need to be.
What's, what's the significance of April first?
I'm saying April, but before the next meeting. Excuse me?
Okay, no, I was asking, what's the significance of April first?
Before he runs out of money. We can't allow him to run out of money. If his, if his personnel work, we have to pay them. And so he'll need an amendment in place in order to do those things. Yes.
That's fine. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we table items, number twenty-five to thirty-four, the board appointments, so we can move forward with our zoning hearings.
I have an appointment. I got an appointment too. Well, I'm gonna hold mine anyway. All right, next is twenty-five. Do you have a second on that motion? All right, the motion fails. We're gonna move on to number twenty-five, which is the board appointments for the metro, for the metro, Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority Citizens Advisory Board. The first one is for Christopher Foster's term on the Martyr, CAB will expire on April sixth, twenty twenty-five. I am going to, board members, I'm just gonna hold that until the April first meeting. Twenty-six is the board appointment for the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority Citizens Advisory Board. Alfred Dixon, are you here tonight, Mr. Dixon? Also, I want, please be, please stand and be recognized. I just saw you. He is our city councilman from Jonesboro. All right, and Alfred Dixon's term on the Martyr, CAB, Martyr, CAB will expire on April sixth, twenty twenty-five. The next term is for two years, expiring on April sixth, twenty twenty-seven. At this time, I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Alfred Dixon to the Martyr CAB Board. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, that was good. All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Any objections? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Twenty-seven, let's give him a round of applause. He's here tonight. Next is twenty-seven, board appointment to the, again, to the Martyr CAB Board. That will be from Commissioner Reeves. Commissioner Reeves, what is your pleasure?
I'd like to hold my appointments for both.
I'd like to hold my appointments for both, uh, twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Alright, again, for twenty-seven and twenty-eight, we will hold those appointments. Next is, um, another appointment for the Martyr C A B board. Commissioner Hamburg, what is your pleasure?
I would like to reappoint Mr. Keith Parker to the Martyr C A B board.
Alright, I second that. Alright, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
Nay.
Nay, okay. All, all opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes.
Can we get the nay?
Four, uh, that, that will be four and one nay from Commissioner Reeves. Next is the board appointment for the Martyr C A B board. Um, again, this is same board and Commissioner Allen.
I think I had one.
Clerk, you can hold my appointment.
You have another one?
I think I had one.
You got another one?
Yes.
Did I miss one?
Your second one.
Oh, sorry, Keith Parker, thirty, I skipped him. Keith Parker's term, Commissioner Hamburg.
No, no, no.
We're on thirty.
I was on thirty.
No, no, you were on twenty-nine.
We're on thirty.
We passed twenty-nine, so the next.
Oh, I passed twenty-nine, ten, uh, no, twenty-nine was, um. No, no, no. Keith Parker, yep, yep, yep. I'm sorry, I skipped because of that. That's fine. And then Keith Parker's term on the Martyr.
No, we got him.
We got him.
So, it's thirty.
Number thirty.
Number thirty, the seat is vacant.
That's what she was doing.
No, you asked.
Madam Chair.
No, that's the one I was going to, y'all let me do this.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
The seat on the Martyr C A B board is vacant. Commissioner Allen, please go ahead. Thank you.
You said it.
It's Commissioner Hamburg.
Let's go.
Uh, the commis.
She's still talking.
The District Two vacant seat for item number thirty is Commissioner Hamburg's.
Thank you.
For number thirty.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so let's go back again. Okay, so the, the summary is not at the bottom of who the person is. That's what I'm missing. You know who it is?
It's vacant.
It's vacant, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, you can go, Commissioner Hamburg.
Uh, yes, I recommend, uh, Mr. Ronnie Marshall Junior.
Alright, I second it. Alright, any discussion at this time? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Now, we can go to thirty-one. This thing all over the place. Okay, next is thirty-one and Commissioner, no, Commissioner Allen.
Yes, I would like to hold my appointments for thirty-one and thirty-two for the next board meeting, April first. Thank you.
Okay, and you're gonna do thirty-one, you're gonna hold thirty-two as well. Uh, alright, thirty-three, Commissioner Davis, what is your pleasure? It's the same board, the Martyr C A B board.
I'd like to move to reappoint Ms. Ramona Bivins.
Alright, can I get a second?
Second.
All, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Alright, thirty-four.
Thirty-four, I'd like to go ahead and reappoint, um, Ms. Tuniqa Boykin.
You said Tuniqa, okay. Can we get a second on that, board members?
Second.
Alright, we have a second. Uh, any discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Alright, next.
Next, we have our zoning hearings. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision. And each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event, there is more than one speaker per side, speaker must divide their time. When the time runs out, speaker will be expected to immediately cease speaking and leave the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of the zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, please remember to speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name clearly, your address, and your name of any organization you represent. Abusive and derogatory language will not be permitted. Our first item is item number thirty-five.
Alright, is the applicant here, um, is the applicant, applicant here tonight?
Alright.
How are you today? Alright, how much time do you need, uh, would you like to reserve for the, uh, you would like to reserve tonight?
Madam Chair, I was gonna read the case for the record, but I believe the applicant is here, but as staff, I was gonna read the case and give an explanation.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so, again, for the record for those, uh, we're at item number thirty-five, I'll read the case again, that's B O C two, four, one, zero, zero, four, five, eight. That's a conditional use request, um, by the applicant, Arco Design Buildings, for a conditional use permit for self-storage. This request, uh, went before the, um, Zon Advisory Group, uh, Planning and Zoning Consultants recommended denial. The Zon Advisory Group, um, recommended to withdraw this request after we did receive requests that the applicant wishes to not move forward with this request. Uh, so we are presenting this item to the Board of Commissioners for a request to withdraw.
Okay, so.
I make a motion to, uh, at the behest of the applicant to withdraw the B O C dash two, four, one, zero, dash, zero, four, five, eight. And does the applicant need to come in?
No, I don't believe that the applicant, well, they have already submitted a letter of notice that they are moving forward with the withdrawal, if needed, yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, I second it. Alright, is there any discussion at this time? Alright, are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Alright, and that's for thirty-five, and then thirty-six?
Moving on to the next item, I'll read item thirty-six for the record. That would be item B O C two, four, one, one, dash, zero, four, six, two. This is a request for rezoning, uh, by the applicant, County Development LLC. The applicant is requesting to rezone, uh, three parcels of land located at fifty-eight eighty-five, fifty-nine fifteen, and fifty-nine twenty-five, County Circle in Rex, Georgia. Uh, the current property is zoned RS one-ten, they're requesting to go to RS one-eighty to develop, uh, single-family lots. Uh, the property consists of three point nine-three acres of land. Um, this request is within Commissioner District One. Um, the Planning and Zoning Consulting Teams recommended approval, uh, with conditions for this petition. Uh, the Zon Advisory Group, um, reviewed this request and made a recommendation for approval with conditions as well. And for the board, I will read those conditions for the record for clarity. The recommendation for, to this board was approval that, one, the rezoning must be recorded as revised, as the revised Pine Brook Heights subdivision phase two, and cite the original plat book and page. The second condition read that covered patios to be required. The third condition read that, and for clarity, that homes should include fifty percent brick with water tables. Condition number four, four-sided, uh, brick shall be an option for home buyers. And lastly, condition number five, four sides of yard, of yards must be sited. Those are the five conditions that were forwarded to you all by the Zon Advisory Group. And again, staff recommendation, Planning and Zoning Team is recommending approval with those conditions, and the applicant is here to answer any questions, or if you have questions for me.
Alright, so the applicant is here to, um, here, and, um, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, I have a question for Attorney Reed. I wanted to have the opportunity to, to, uh, discuss with the applicant further, um, so I don't wanna initiate a public hearing. What is the process for that?
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
If they are willing to, uh, agree to continue this, um, then they can come up here and say that, and then they can continue it to the next meeting of whenever you go, and then we'll just have the public hearing at that time.
So, what's the next step?
So, they will come up here.
Good evening. Christian Tarazona, District One.
Good evening. Daniel Castro, uh, District One.
Hey. I know we, we've only had the opportunity to have one conversation, and I just, I wanna talk with you all some more. If I remember correctly, these are the townhouses that will be built on septic, correct?
Uh, no, they're not, they're homes.
They're individual family homes.
Alright, would you all be amenable, amenable to coming back to the next, when's the next Planning and Zoning, uh, hearing?
What'd be, April fifteenth?
April fifteenth, yes. Would you all be open to coming back on the, on the fifteenth, so that we can schedule a proper meeting and sit down and talk about this project?
Well, if there is no more option, I mean, we have been in this process for a year and a half now.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, since like days, and so, I mean, another month is another month, right? So, for us, it's, it's just, uh, adding to the.
We haven't had the opportunity to sit down and further talk through this project, and I still have questions, so I wanna make sure that you all have the best opportunity for the, you know, for discussion.
That's fine.
So, we don't need a vote? We just, is it? Just a motion?
To table.
To table.
So, uh, I make a motion to table, um, B O C twenty-four eleven dash zero, four, six, two, to the April fifteenth meeting, and, um, I'll get you on my, well, y'all are already in touch with my constituent aid, and we'll just sit down and, and properly talk about this project.
Okay.
Sorry, let me refresh, let me say that again. I make a motion to table B O C dash twenty-four eleven dash zero, four, six, two.
Alright, I second that motion.
Sorry, one question. So, will contact your assistant for, okay.
Until when?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, I second that motion. Is there any discussion at this time? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Next is thirty-seven, item thirty-seven, B O C dash twenty-four twelve dash zero, four, six, six, for a conditional use permit.
Yes, this is the last zoning petition for this evening. Again, that's B O C two, four, one, two, zero, four, six, six, request by Keenan Media for a conditional use permit for the conversion of a one-side mechanical face on a digital, um, face of a billboard. Uh, the property located at sixty-eight Adfrontage Road in Forest Park, Georgia. Um, the property is currently zoned heavy industrial. Again, this is a condition used for all billboards that are to be erected or to come in compliance will have to obtain this before approval, before the work is done. Staff has reviewed over the request. The Planning and Zoning Consultants recommended approval of this request with no conditions. Um, the Zon Advisory Group mirrored that recommendation for approval as well with no conditions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have for me at this time.
Board members, do you have any questions at this time? Alright, is the applicant, um, here tonight or present? Come on up.
Good evening, board, chair.
How much time do, um, do you need to reserve for rebuttal at this time?
Depends on if someone's gonna be speaking in opposition to me.
Look, so how, how, how many minutes?
What's the maximum time?
Uh, ten.
Let's shoot for five.
Five, okay. So, five and five, we got it. You ready? Alright.
Yes, ma'am, I'm Brett Keenan, the other half of Keenan Media.
Okay.
And I'm Lane Keenan. We're based out of Conyers, Georgia. We represent Keenan Media. We're the co-founders of the company. So, happy to answer any questions that you guys have. As staff mentioned, we are simply seeking to convert a TriVision billboard into a digital billboard face. There is no structural modification that's being made. It fully conforms with all GDOT rec, rules and regulations, and also the Clayton County rules and regulations. GDOT has approved this upgrade as well, uh, and I've provided that to staff. More or less, all the documentation we've, we've provided should showcase everything surrounding this project and, and what we're seeking to do. But, but that is our request at this moment. Thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, nothing really to add, just like I said, we, you know, trying to put forward everything we have. If you guys have any questions or any concerns about what may be going on, we're happy to help out, but as my brother mentioned, no structural modifications. We're just trying to change the tech, technology and just try to convert it to a new face from an older, more prehistoric face, I guess you could say, you know.
And, and just to reiterate, the sign will not have any negative impact on traffic patterns. It is auto dimming, auto-regulated on the light sensor, so it senses the ambient lighting around, around the billboard and, you know, adjusts that to the level of lighting that it needs to be. There is strict maximum levels for brightness that it will adhere to, and it is shipped based upon the county's standards when it leaves our manufacturer's facility. So, there should be no any issues regarding, uh, you know, adverse lighting or anything in that nature.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, alright. Next, um, is there anyone here in favor of this item? Are y'all finished? Again, is there anyone here in favor of this item?
Madam Chair, I'd like to say something.
Okay, come on up. So, come, what's the time? Three, okay, three minutes.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. I want them to know that I have a question that I'd like to ask. And they are in a heavy industrial area of which I would approve of a billboard being in. But my question is, for a small area for a billboard, why are we tying up twenty-six and a half acres for no more, uh, heavy industrial going in? This'll be, this'll be just for assigned twenty-six acres when something else could come in and add to our, uh, tax base, so to speak. Uh, that's all my question is, and if I could get these gentlemen to answer it, I'd certainly appreciate it.
Alright, when they come up for their, um, their allotted time to the podium towards the end, I'm sure, what, but. Now, next, is there anyone opposed, I'm sorry, anyone for, I'm gonna ask again. Is there anyone in favor of this item? Seeing none, is there anyone who is opposed to this, in opposition to this item? Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? One more time, is there anyone here in opposition to this item? Alright, so the applicant can come up for rebuttal. Five minutes.
Thank you, board. Uh, in regard to the gentleman's question, uh, this property has already been developed as an equipment rental facility. We are not tying up any property whatsoever, other than the four-by-four foot ground space that this billboard sits on. Uh, the rest of the twenty-six plus acres is freely able to be developed by the property owner. We do not own the property, just for clarity. Uh, so the, the property is able to be developed on whatever account the owner would like to. This billboard has been in existence for over twenty years now, and was approved by Clayton County and GDOT originally when it was built. So, you know, we're simply just continuing the perpetuation of this sign operating in a conforming state. Um, but as, as that is stated, we do not intend to tie up the property, nor would, do we have any requests to get twenty-four acres for a billboard sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to just add, in addition, the sign, also, we have to pay through it with our money, which obviously taxes are gonna come to it, and these signs are not the cheapest things on earth, so we definitely be bringing some intrinsic value, especially for the amount of land we're tying up, and as my brother stated, it has already been sitting here. Nothing's gonna change essentially if we didn't do this, you know, it's gonna sit as it is, so. We're just trying to make it some new technology, try to get some more exposure to local businesses, and hope, continue to drive tax revenue up for the surrounding area.
Alright, anything else at this time?
No, thank you, chair.
Alright, Commissioner Hamburg, what is your pleasure?
Uh, yes, Madam Chairwoman and board, I move that we accept B O C two, four, one, two, dash, zero, four, six, six, for a conditional use permit.
Alright, I second that motion. Is there any discussion at this time, board members? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. This now ends zone, our zoning meeting. Next, um, as, as, next, um, Commissioner, I'm about to say Commissioner, Attorney Reed, is there any need for executive session? No, no, yes.
I wish. Uh, yes, on litigation and real estate.
And personnel.
And personnel.
Alright, and, and at this time, I need a motion to go into executive session for litigation, real estate, and personnel.
So, moved.
May I get a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion at this time? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion at this time? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, all opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Let's go, Chuck.
Alright, uh, I have four settlements, two auto accidents. First is Akina Mike, A K I N A, in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars relating to an accident that occurred on, uh, August seventh, twenty twenty-two, in Fulton County. Se, uh, and this is against the sheriff's office. Uh, the next is Carolyn Orr, also against the sheriff's office, uh, Clayton County. Uh, another auto accident, and this is in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. five hundred thousand dollars relating to an auto accident that occurred on November eighth, twenty twenty-three at Cameron Parkway, out near the intersection with Lake Spavy Parkway. The next are two civil service cases. First is Jabari Ferguson and, um, respondent Levon Allen in his capacity as sheriff of Clayton County. And this is in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. And the final is Shanita Henderson and, uh, Levon Allen in his capacity as sheriff of Clayton County. This is a civil service matter in amount of twenty thousand dollars. You can do them all, I was just explaining what they were.
Okay.
And this is to also request that the, um, Chief Financial Officer amend the budget to reflect appropriate revenue source and expenses required under these agreements.
All right, are you all ready for the, um, motion? Is, what's, what's the motion, Chuck? We gonna take all of them at one time?
Motion to approve?
Did any of them need to be separated?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, does the sheriff need to be separated?
They're all sheriff's cases.
Okay.
So, just one motion to approve all four, if that's the desire of the board.
Okay.
So, motion to approve.
Second, all right, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you. Abstention, please state your, why you abstaining at this time?
Now, let me ask you this, with no ethics board in place, can my abstention be due to lack of counsel on voting? Because we don't know if it's a conflict of interest or not at this time.
You can say the reason why you're abstaining now.
Okay, so the reason I am abstaining now, due to not having, um, a legal opinion on what is, um, a conflict of interest as it relates to Commissioner Allen and the Sheriff's Office. Thank you.
All right, all right, the ayes have it and the motion passes with one abstention. Thank you. At this time, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Have a wonderful night.